Good evening. This is the meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals, taking place Tuesday, September -- oh, nope. Taking place Tuesday, November 14th, at Town Hall. We will first rise to do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To their Republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, living in justice for all.
My open-meeting law hybrid statement. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their television by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real-time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in the public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your questions, comments prior to or during the meeting to jbatersby@northandoverma.gov. That's J Battersby, B-A-T-T-E-R-S-B-Y, at northandoverma.gov. The question slash comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. First up is the acceptance of the minutes for October 10th, 2023.
I second.
All bakers?
Aye.
Okay. We now have the continued hearing for zero Winter Street lots 13, 14, and 15, which all have a finding and a variance. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening. Good to see everybody again. For the record, Mark Johnson, I'm here on behalf of the applicants on the three petitions. What I wanted to do to start the meeting would be just to go through some questions that were raised at the last meeting. And I've submitted documentation to the board to review, and I also have a very short PowerPoint. Sure. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do I control the --
I can control.
Oh, okay. Yeah, if you can do the next slide, please. Okay, thank you. The issues that were raised at the last meeting was whether or not the plan that we had submitted with the application was the appropriate plan to be submitted with the application. There were comments made that somehow we didn't submit the plan that was required to be submitted, and we submitted some different plan, some different iteration. And there was some great deal of discussion as to somehow if the plans submitted with the application were not the final plans. And I'll address that in a minute. The other question that was asked was, when I referred to the plan having been approved, if that was a proper way to refer to the plan as being approved? And then the third question was, how do we know that these lots were assessed as buildable lots? And then there's a question asked to the wetlands. So I'd like to just go through the PowerPoint and just explain a little bit to the board why the plan submitted with the application was the proper plan, even though it did not have the endorsement of the clerk or an endorsement of the planning board. And my guess is, most of you are used to seeing registry plans that are signed by a planning board, or have a signature of a town clerk on it, or an approval-not-required plan, which is a certification by the planner that the plan does not require a planning board approval. That's because most of the land in Massachusetts is recorded land as opposed to registered land. And in Massachusetts, we have two land registry systems. We have the recorded land system and the registered land system. The difference is that registered land is land that has been -- that has the title to it and is certified by Land Court. It goes through a whole process by the Land Court Department in Boston before a plan is approved and then sent to the registry. So what's up on the board right now is -- comes from the file in Land Court, which ultimately approved this subdivision or approved this plan dividing the lots. And if you look at what's up on the board, you'll see that this plan does have the signature of the clerk, and it's filed in Land Court. And it's stamped by Land Court, and it shows the endorsement of the town clerk. Land Court goes through that, they review all of the documents, and then ultimately they issue what's called a certificate of title, or an order from Land Court effectively certifying who owns the property and what the encumbrances on the property are, and that's a certificate of title. Land Court then transmits -- and if we can hit the next slide -- then translates -- transmits the plan to the registry. Now, what's up here now on the screen is not a plan of the land that's before you tonight, but this is a subdivision plan. And this is a subdivision plan for Orchard Village. And this plan came from the Land Court Department. It shows that it's been signed by the town clerk, and that's what's found in Land Court. Next slide, please. What happens is, when Land Court has finished reviewing the plan, they send the plan to the Registry of Deeds. And that's the plan that's up on the screen right now. It doesn't have the town clerk's signature on it, but what it has is a certification and a signature from the Land Registration Office. And that is approving the plan, and that's what's on file at the Registry of Deeds in Lawrence. So that if you go to do a title search on the property and you look to convey property, that is the plan that you're referring to in the deeds. It's the plan that's in Lawrence. The other plans are not. They are part of the file in Land Court. And it's the same for subdivision. The next slide, please. And that's the Orchard Village subdivision plan again. And again, that's signed by the Land Registration Office by the Register of Land Court. And it does not show a signature of the town clerk or the planning board. And that's what's on record at the registry, and that's what conveyances are made off of. And next slide, please. And so what ends up happening is, you get a certificate of title. A certificate of title is a court decree that certifies someone owns property with a description of the property, referencing a plan in a certificate of title, and lists encumbrances on what's known as an encumbrance sheet. And this is a -- this is the Land Court certificate of title for Land Court Plan 40905D. It's attached to the certificate of title. Next slide, please. And this is -- this is recorded land. If it wasn't registered, it'd be recorded. And for recorded land, you would have recorded at the registry a plan signed by the planning board, or signed by the planner. But the property that we're dealing with in this petition is registered land, and that's why the plan that was submitted -- next slide, please. That's why the plan that was submitted with the application did not have the signature of the town clerk. It did not have the signature of anybody from the planning department, because you would never have that on a registered land plan. All those documents are in Land Court, and they are not the applicable -- that's not the documents you convey off of. And the documents that we submitted and the plans we submitted with the application were the plans from the registry in Lawrence, and those were the final plans for the land that's shown on it. The next question that came up is a question of the failure to act. And next slide, please. The statute provides that if the board fails to act under -- on a Form A plan, and both fails to act or fails to notify the town clerk or the applicant within 21 days after its submission, it should be deemed that it's been approved. That 21-day period, that's what the current statute says. What was applicable for this one, and next slide, please, was not the 21 days, but was applicable was 14 days. And I don't think there's any question, going through the various documents, that the town clerk was never notified within the 14-day period. There's a question as to when the statute changed, and why isn't it 21 days if the current statute has? The reason for that is that the decision of the planning board to deny the Form A plan or not approve it was filed in the town clerk's office on June 2nd. That was outside the 14 days. The statute was amended on June 3rd, and that's what's up on the screen right now. And on June 3rd, it changed to 21 days. But when the planning board failed to act, it was still 14 days. And by coincidence, the 14-day period, or the clerk certified that the 14-day period hadn't -- sorry, the planning board filed their application of disapproval in the clerk's office the day before the statute was amended. So I don't think there's any question that what the clerk did was proper, and that the applicable time period was 14 days. Next slide, please. When a planning board fails to act on a plan, it's considered to be a constructive approval. And I use the word approval, because that's what it's considered. It's considered to be constructively approved by failure to act. And it's the same language actually the town council has talked about in her memo that we received today. And the case law is clear that the word constructive approval is one that's used by the courts and used by attorneys who practice law in this area to signify that a plan has been approved based upon the failure of a board to act timely. And that's why the word approval was used, and the constructive approval is what we have in this particular case. Next slide. A question came up on the lot assessments, and how do we know that they were assessed as buildable lots? Next slide. The town of North Andover uses a code for assessment, and it's found -- and the code is placed on the assessor card for the various lots. And it describes -- it describes classifications. Thank you. As I get older, it's hard to see, and I appreciate you blowing up a little bit. As developable land, which is code 130, potentially developable land, 131, and undevelopable land as 132. The three lots in question in this application were classified as developable land, and that's off of the assessor cards. And these are the assessments. This is the current card showing the assessment of one of the lots, and it shows what it's been assessed at historically. And you've had this in various forms, but it's showing that the current assessment is $331,000, I think, $600. And it's been constantly assessed as a, I would say, as a buildable lot. Next card, please. Next slide. Same thing on this lot, same code, and again, $331,000 is the current assessment, and you can see the way it's been assessed as buildable lots. And this came off of the assessor records. So the grid you see on the right was not a grid we put together, but that's off of the assessor records. And then the next lot, again, $335,000, assessed as buildable lots, and that takes it back pretty far. And again, that's off the assessor record. Next slide. Then the question came up, well, how about the unbuildable lot? How do we know that that was unbuildable? Well, that has a code of 132, which is unbuildable, and you can see what the land value is, which currently it's assessed at $800. And that's what the town would assess unbuildable lots as, and that's historically been assessed as unbuildable. Now, the next question that came up was a question asked to the wetlands. And Dennis Greci from Andover Consultants is here, so I can stop talking a little bit, and he can explain the wetland plan.
Good evening. Dennis Greci with Andover Consultants here on behalf of the applicant. I will keep this generally brief, but there was a question at the last hearing regarding the wetlands on site and how it would impact the potential development of the three lots. So the site plan before you, it has not changed significantly from the last iteration, but what we've tried to do is better show exactly the wetlands and the buffers that those wetlands cast and how they impact the development. So this first zone is what's called the 25-foot no disturbs zone, so there's -- you can't touch any of the ground. There's no disturbance, no grading activity whatsoever within that 25-foot zone. The second zone is the 50-foot no build, so that would be the construction of any structures, houses, pools. That includes driveways and retaining walls. Driveways and retaining walls would be allowed within the 25 -- excuse me, within the 50-foot buffer if there are no other means to access your upland. The 100-foot buffer, which is the last line shown here, just means that the Conservation Commission would have jurisdiction. So all three of these lots will require a filing with the Conservation Commission. But as we've shown on the three plans, we do have the space to meet all the various setbacks. So the 25-foot no disturbs zone would remain undisturbed. As you can see, the dwelling is outside of the 50-foot setback, as is the driveway and a proposed septic system. The plans before you are relatively preliminary. We would have to do final grading, and we'd be submitting those plans to the Conservation Commission for their review and input to make sure we meet all the performance standards. But if you cycled through to the next two lots, I'm sure it's generally the same. So again, this would be the middle lot, again, the 25-foot no disturbs zone, the 50-foot no build. You can see we've made all efforts to keep the driveway outside of the 50-foot buffer. Same thing in the rear of the lot, the 25-foot and the 50-foot buffer, the house, the septic, the driveway are all outside of that 50-foot no disturb. They are within the 100-foot buffer, so they will require filing with the Conservation Commission. And then the last lot, this lot is probably the most open. Again, the 25-foot buffer extends onto the lot here, and some small portions there. 50-foot buffer won't impact the site, and you can barely see the 100-foot buffer from that smaller wetland along Winter Street here. So this lot probably has the least potential for filing with the Conservation Commission, depending on where -- how the site grading goes. We may be grading into the 100-foot buffer, but again, we will be able to meet all the performance standards in the wetland bylaw.
Happy to answer any questions, or elaborate on anything you'd like us to elaborate on.
You addressed numerous things that were raised at the last issue, at the last hearing, or at the last meeting. The issue came up about how long the lots were grandfathered for.
Yeah, we've indicated that we're not claiming that we have grandfathered protection today. What we've indicated is that the town has assessed the lots as separate lots, as separate buildable lots, and has treated other lots as buildable --
Sir, can you get closer to the map, please?
Oh, sorry. We've indicated that the town has assessed these lots as separate buildable lots since the plan went on, and currently assesses them to date, and that the town has issued building permits for a number of the lots on the plan, and not to continue to do so would be inconsistent with the position the town has taken.
So the fact that these prior lots were done in 1991, and we're talking about issues from 1987, zoning changes from 1987. Lot 8 was 1991. Lot 9 was 1994. Lot 11 was '95. Lot 12 was '97. We're in 2023. That is massive. That time right there is creating a huge, a huge difference between something being done in 1997 compared to zoning changes in '87, which I will tell you, I'm looking at the statute, which you're focusing and you're stating in the supplement, that Plan 40905D are protected under MGL 40A, Section 6.
It was protected for a period of time. We're not claiming that it's protected --
Hold on. It was protected for a period of time, and that that's what got you lots 8, 9, 11, and 12.
I don't believe so. I think those are probably outside the time that they were protected. But what I'm saying is --
And when I'm -- the point I'm getting at is I see this as a mistake was made back in 1994, '95, and '97. Those lots shouldn't have been allowed. And there's a difference between continuing something that shouldn't have been versus treating something differently 20-plus years later.
I don't want to interrupt you, so let me know when you're done. Our position is, and you don't have to agree with it, but just so you understand what our position is, that this plan was constructively approved. The plan had grandfathered protection. We're not claiming that it's protected today. But what we are claiming is, the town has done two things. The town allowed the conveyance of lots and building permits for lots on this plan, and the town continues to assess these lots as buildable lots. Now, the town could have assessed these as unbuildable lots, but the town elected to continue to assess it as a buildable lot, leading my client to believe that these lots would be buildable after paying over $330,000, $340,000 total between the various lots over the years. And it was being paid because of the belief that these lots would be buildable lots, and they could be sold as buildable lots. Now, clearly, as Dennis has indicated, in order to, even if we get the variances from the relief from this board, we still have to go to the Conservation Commission, and we understand that. But my client has been paying taxes since '87, '88 on lots that were separate lots, separately assessed as buildable lots. And that's, you know, and that's the basis of our application here tonight. And, you know, I've tried taking you through the history. Certainly a lot of paper, and I appreciate you going through and reading the paper. It's not the simplest things, but when it comes down to it, you have a -- you have landowners in North Andover who believe they had separate lots, and I think it's reasonable for them to believe they had separate lots. They weren't attorneys back then. But they kept getting tax bills as a buildable lot. And they kept paying the tax bills as a buildable lot. And now when it came time to be able to sell the lots, they're finding that these lots are not considered to be buildable lots, and that's why they're coming before this board, because this board can grant relief in the appropriate situation. And when you have -- and when you have landowners that have paid this much money in taxes on three separate lots, I believe that that is something this board should take into consideration in determining whether or not to grant the relief. My client would like to say something, if it's appropriate time for her to say it.
I just have a question, directly relating to what you just said. Is that better to do now, or you want to wait?
No, no, I'm happy to --
Okay. So certainly understand that in like, you know, in the application for a variance, one of the things that we consider is the level of hardship that would be incurred, right, by not granting that? And I certainly understand how the tax burden would contribute to that. And it sounds like there are other North Andover town residents who feel like their significant investment of their own properties would be at risk due to how water flow might change. So you're the engineer who wrote up the plans, yeah? So one of the questions I had about the drainage plan that was implemented is, you know, there was a dry well and the trenches along the driveways. Are the trenches connected to the dry well? Or are they just there?
The dry well is not connected to the trench. The dry well is to infiltrate the roof runoff, and the trenches infiltrate the runoff from the driveway.
So the trenches are sort of free-floating?
Correct.
Like they're not connected to any other drainage system? Is the volume of water that that's calculated for based on, like, average rainfall, or extreme rainfall like in a year we've had like this one?
It's certainly not based on an extreme rainfall. I mean, that wouldn't be expected for --
I'm just curious what's based on.
Yeah, no, so it's not an extreme rainfall event. To extend, the trench, it's a two-by-two trench, crushed stone, so it had 40% voids. I can give you the exact number. I don't know it off the top of my head, but there's a certain amount of inches of rain that that'll accept. Same with the roof runoff system.
Okay. Yeah, and so I understand that the drainage proposal you put forth is not required of you by law, right? This is not like a large subdivision. But since that's the main concern of the abutters, I kind of want to drill down on it and ask like, you know, I've worked with lots of crushed stone in my life. It fills up with debris. It fills up with leaves. There's tons of trees on these sites. What's to prevent these trenches from being obsolete in like two years?
Typically, the Conservation Commission will require an operation and maintenance plan that would require the routine maintenance of those trenches, along with the roof drain system. We can put peat stones on top, which will hopefully prevent some of the debris that you're describing clogging up the system. But it would be routine maintenance that would be required by the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Do you would like Ms. Cashman to speak?
Yes.
We've been through so many of these issues during these many meetings, and my thought is that the zoning board is here to grant relief in unusual situations. And I do feel that our family's situation, because of the history, because of what happened with the town previously granting these permits, which by the way have not caused any problems and which are the same as most of the houses in the neighborhood. It was one-acre zoning, and most of the houses have one acre on them, and everything's fine. So I think the key word is relief. You know, I believe that our family deserves the relief of this board, which is hugely financial to us. The difference between even three lots and two lots is huge. We've done the best that we can over the years to preserve the land as long as we could, which is why so many years have gone by since the last building. My mother scraped together the taxes each quarter so that we could save the land as long as we could, because we all love that land. I love that land. I wish I didn't have to sell that land. But that's not the case. It's part of the estate, and it has to be settled. So our -- we're faced with doing the best we can, since we have to sell the land, doing the best we can financially with this land. So between our history in the town, the situation of the town, being certainly responsible for not letting us know that there was a change, and other factors, I think we deserve consideration. If we complied with every single issue, we wouldn't be here, because that's what the zoning board is for. And I think the zoning board should be here to help the resident whenever possible, unless there's a huge danger of something horrible happening if these lots were buildable and assessed and allowed to do what they were meant to do so many years ago. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board members?
No questions.
Counselor, how would you like to proceed?
I just want to point out, we had submitted a letter from North Environmental, which was a prior package indicating that the resource area on the lot is not considered to be a resource area under the Wilderness Protection Act, and that goes back to the Andor discussion we had a number of months ago on a prior petition. But that is within the application. Unless the -- if the board would like any additional information or additional questions for us to answer, we're happy to do so. But otherwise, we've submitted, I think, the information that we have, and for the board to make a decision on this. Not that I don't mind coming back each month, but I think on this one, we've probably submitted, you know, what we have, and hopefully the issues are clear to the board. But again, if you think we're missing something, if you'd like elaboration on something, please let us know. We're happy to do that.
So I may have missed this along the way, but I went out to the lots, just in knowing the seriousness of this matter. I had driven by them before, but I guess you could call me a trespasser today. Thank you. I -- and so what stands out to me is the topography. Okay, so clearly the lot behind your house with the barn that's referred to, you know, the cement barn, I mean, that lot is relatively flat. the cement barn, I mean, that lot is relatively flat, but the, I'm curious about the development now. So, if those lots are sold, and they're going to be developed, the, there's been lots of feedback from abutters. I don't know if they're here tonight, but there's been feedback. And I have to envision, I mean, if a contractor, what happens to the topography and what is the result of that to the abutters, you know, going forward? So, that may have been something that's, you know, you may, you're going to tell me you've already looked into this. But that's the main thing on my mind, is especially that the lot furthest from your house, you know, that is, there's going to need to be some, I would assume, some work done in order to build the house there. So, the environmental impact is what's on my mind. So, please educate me on what's going through my mind.
So, I believe the lot you're referring to is the lot we're looking at on the screen right now?
Yeah, that's the lot.
So, it's going to depend on the final house layout, but most contractors will try to minimize earthwork, just as the cost that they want to avoid. As far as the resource areas goes, there will be a full hay bough area or erosion control barrier.
What?
An erosion control barrier. So, either silt sock or a hay bough barrier that will be put up at the limit of clearing, at the limit of work, which will prevent the sediment and runoff going into the wetland or to the abutters' property line. So, I believe minimizing the grading activity to the extent possible and also putting in the erosion control barrier.
So, if I was an abutter, what assurances do I have that I understand what you're saying? But if I'm an abutter, you know, what would allow me to sleep at night if someone was developing that lot?
Well, I think that the filing with the Conservation Commission, assuming we meet all the performance standards that the commission requires with regards to erosion protection, erosion control, that should suffice. I would assume if it's good enough for the wetland resource area, it should be good enough for the, for an abutter.
Anything else from the board? Do you want me to give anybody a minute?
I'm ready to...
Can I say one more thing?
Sure, Mrs. Cashman.
I just wanted to point out that Mr. Ford, who has written many emails and concerned, lives several houses down on Winter Street, on the other side of the street. And if you look at the abutters' map, only one small corner of his property is within that abutters' part, and there would be, I can't see any danger at all to his property if the zoning was for three acres.
Thank you. Triple-checking here. It's been quite a few months of hearings.
So, Alexandria, is there any abutters here?
Well, have we opened public comment?
What's that?
Have we opened public comment?
That's...
Well, I'm taking care of the board first.
Okay.
Is there anybody in the audience that is here on the Winter Street Matters that would like to speak? Hi. Ford?
I moved at the closing.
Well, hold on. Don't worry. I know we're all very antsy to get there. Counselor, I'm going to assume, since we've been doing these together, that you are going to want us to, or that we would be closing out the finding for lot 13, 14, 15, and the variances for lot 13, 14, 15, and then we will, the board will discuss, and we will take an individual vote on each finding and each variant.
That's fine.
Okay. Is there anything else you would like to add?
No, I've reached the end of what I have to offer.
Okay. Now...
I move that we close the public comment.
Okay. Can I get Ron?
Aye.
Oh, yes. Sorry, you seconded.
Aye.
I'm an aye.
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 Okay. So, we will close. All right, Ford? What do you got?
All right, I'll go first. This has been rattling around my head for months now. I said, if I get a hernia carrying all the paper upstairs, I'm going to sue somebody here. So, it's, kind of, this is where I come down on it. Yes, the lots were changed to one-acre lots at the time of the rezoning in '87. And what we're told was that there was kind of an implied promise...
Well, don't forget, CBA was changed the year before.
Okay. And what we're told is that there's implied promise that these would remain buildable lots, despite the change that the zoning was done for two-acre zoning. And while you say it was a mistake that three lots were done in the subsequent years, I don't think they can make a mistake on three lots over a 10-year period with as many approvals as you need to do things. So, I'm saying that these were not mistakes. These were a fulfillment of the implied promise that these lots were going to be considered buildable. The tax record does show them as buildable, and despite what the town council has said in this, to assess somebody that level of taxes on a buildable lot for that many years, only to find out that it is not a buildable lot, and it could have been assessed at much less, as one of the lots was, I think is extremely unfair. I don't see any reason to not permit this. I think it is a matter of fairness. I don't, there's a lot of one-acre lots around there that predate the zoning, and I don't think any harm has come from one-acre lots. I would say that when I moved into town, they get, kind of gets back to what you were saying, Steve, that was when they developed Foxwoods way up on a hill. We were all worried we were going to get flooded out. We've had no issues with Foxwoods. Next to Foxwood is another road. I forget the name of it, but I can see it from my kitchen window, like they can see Alaska from my house. We missed the view, but that wasn't our view. That wasn't our land. They developed that land. We've had no issue with that. So, people do know how to build so that those who live downhill from these developments do not get flooded out. So, I'm not concerned about that. People know how to do that. To me, this is strictly a matter of fairness. Taxes were paid. The land has been preserved. It is time to move on, and I think we ought to allow this.
I have a question, because you've been on the board just about, you've been on the board for a while. Do you remember when we had an application come through, and it had been a vacant lot that was considered a buildable lot? And there was a house here, a house here, a house here, and an empty lot? Do you remember that?
No.
I do.
No.
You might have been out during that period.
You might have been out. There are numerous times where we, as a board, deny things because the zoning changes, and people are paying taxes on something that they think they can do something with. And as much as I feel for that, it's the people who have to deal with conservation. When they buy their house, they don't have an ounce of conservation wetlands near them, and then, all of a sudden, 10 years later, they want to put addition on because they were told when they bought their house 20 years ago, they could put an addition. Now, conservation turns around and says, no.
I have one of those.
I do as well. And it's very frustrating. So, I can understand the position, but we, as a town, make decisions. And when you have massive numbers voting to go from one acre to two acre, that, I think, should matter. And I think this board needs to look at that and say, that matters. And they had a period of time. I can't tell you if it was the building, I'm sorry, inspector of buildings wasn't as thorough as one we have now. I can't tell you what happened, but I think there is still a difference between 10 years and, what, 35?
Right. So, let me answer that question.
And as much as I understand, as much as I understand the issue of it continuing to be a buildable lot, it is still property owner's responsibility to know. They were aware, if you want to go with the sequence of how it's presented, they were aware zoning was going to change. So, they took specific steps to preserve, right? Then, they should have been aware of what that came with, and that came with a time limit. It's like our permits. When we give permits, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, when we give permits, they have time limits. If you don't follow the time limit, you are out of luck. When you come to zoning and you get a decision from here, if you don't act on it in a certain period of time and you don't renew, you are out of luck. So, I just don't understand how we ignore all of those things because we're looking at the taxes, which has no bearing on...
What's the timeline on there?
Well, it depends. I believe it's either three or five years.
To do what?
To build. When the zoning...
Subdivision?
They, if you want to look at it in terms of under chapter 40, section 6, I believe is what it is, it was either three or five years, and town council mentions in their memo, that they had to build to go under the old zoning. But understand, the applicant just said they're not looking at this from the grandfather perspective. They're looking at this as, if a mistake was made in 1997, we should continue that mistake in 2023, because that's what's fair.
So, there's another plan, and I understand that, like, precedent doesn't count on the board, that, like, we have to look at each case individually. But there was maps that were submitted for another subdivision where the same stamp issue was a question and recorded versus registered land. That subdivision, I believe, was developed, I think the newest house is, like, 2015, like, really recently, like, and if it were registered in the same time period as these and developed in 2015, then it would be much more recent than the 1998, which I think is the last time that one of these was built, and it was still allowed, even though it was...
Except for if it's something that wasn't hard...
It didn't need as many variances or whatnot.
Well, I can't even speak to it, because I have no idea what the situation was.
It's fair. Yeah.
On that, I mean, for all you know, they were, I don't know...
Fully in compliance.
5,000 square feet short, or, you know, they had the, I mean, this isn't a variance where we're looking at two feet. This is a variance where they are completely an acre short, where we have massive CBA. And the frontage, I could probably give up on the frontage. The frontage, you're talking, you know, 25, which is not a massive thing when you look at it, but when you put it all together, it is really big. And if I, all I have to rest my head on is, I feel really, really bad that she had to spend a bunch of money in taxes because it was taxed as buildable. That's not good enough for me, because every single application we have come in front of us could be, I feel bad because that person bought this house with the intent that they were going to put on a family suite. Or this person bought that house with the intent that they were going to get a family suite for their in-law to move in. So, I just don't see how the property tax is something to base my vote on.
I think because it's a very large difference. I think it's worth consideration. I, you know, it's, I would say, as large a difference, if not more, than the difference in the variance that's being requested. I do think the finding, to me, is completely out. I mean, it's just, it's asking for a definitive statement about the correctness of the process, which I don't think is appropriate. But for the variance, like, yes, the variance request is extreme, but the year-over-year investment into the town was also pretty extreme compared to what it could have been if they were actually assessed as non-buildable lots. And I think it's worth consideration that that's a significant hardship. I mean, they could have sold these lots and had people build on them in the '80s, and they could have put all of that money into a stock market index and had made way more money. They would have hundreds of thousands more dollars now if they had sold these properties in the '80s. But they wanted to keep the land not developed. And it sounds like the reason why they're selling now is not because they don't want to keep the land undeveloped, it's because some folks passed away, and they need to reconcile that. And I don't think that the intentions are bad. I think the hardship is high. I don't see a lot of threat to anything that wouldn't be covered under conservation guidelines. I guess I don't know that I can say no to something that is such a big deal to a resident of the town.
See, if she was, if she was an independent buyer, then maybe I'd sit here and say, there was no idea for her to know. But they did know. They purposely created these lots, knowing this. So, if you're good, if you're staying on top of things enough to know the zoning is changing, and then, and I understand, listen, and maybe I'm cruel and mean for this, if I could go back and undo the 1994 and 95 and 97 being sold and built, I absolutely would. If they're outside of the timeframe, they're outside of the timeframe, and I understand it, but so what? We just continue, continue it? I mean, they were close enough in date. I wouldn't be surprised if it was this, and I don't know this for sure, I'm just saying because of the timeframe, I wouldn't be surprised if it was the same building inspector. So, he didn't, not everybody is aware of everything. And you're never going to be able to find out whether or not he was aware and ignored or didn't know. I just don't see why we should continue that.
Yeah, except that we can. We do have, that is the point of the zoning board. We do have the power to override the rules as written in order to, you know, continue a situation that we think is proper. It doesn't have to have a legal precedent, as long as we think that it makes sense in this situation. And, you know, I agree that not everybody, I don't think I would be making this decision based on whether or not the building inspector in the '90s, you know, did it right or didn't. I think it's about what's happened up to this point, and I think that, you know, they paid many tens of thousands of dollars, if not, you know, close to $100,000 of taxes on these, you know, that the town has benefited from, and the town has benefited from having open space there that could have been developed in the '80s.
Well, that's relevant now, because it's going to be gone.
Well, I mean, it will be sold. There's...
But it's not like it was open space that was being used by the town, so...
Can I chime into this? So, is this decision all based upon a financial hardship? You know, when we look at soil conditions, shape, topography as one of the criteria, you know, we have the hardship, and then we move into other areas. So, is it fair to say that this decision is exclusively a financial hardship decision?
Well, and it's not a leeway that we are officially given.
Right. That is not one of the parameters that we're supposed to be deciding hardship upon.
No, I'm, where I'm, the reason I bring this up is Jen's, the article that I read today, talking about the seriousness of a variance.
Yeah. Those criteria have to create a hardship, including financial. So, you have the criteria...
So, I'm referring, I mean, and that's the state, that's the state who created that document, not us. And so, I would say this is candidly the most difficult decision that I've had to make in my role here on this board, and that's why I'm trying to understand.
I don't know if the hardship is, because, understand, there's, and I couldn't tell you, because I don't know, the concept of the property taxes being the financial hardship, I think, is different, and I don't, this is just where I'm coming from, is different from the hardship of, you can't put the addition here because of the ledge and the cost is going to be so overpowering compared to the cost of putting the addition here, but needing a three-foot setback. So, if doing the addition, if doing the addition in the backyard, right, where you don't need to come to zoning, costs you $50,000, but to put the addition on the side is going to cost you 10, but you need that variance, because we've had situations where that's what you're looking at. Or if you have a side yard or a backyard where there's a massive drop-off, the...
So, you don't put the taxes into that category?
I don't look at the hardship as the property taxes, because the property taxes is... I don't look at the hardship as the property taxes, because the property taxes is, it's something completely outside. I mean, I understand it's not the applicant's fault either, but I just can't look at that as being.
But, but isn't it a financial hardship if they can't sell a lot?
But keep in mind, in this situation, there's the question of the lots are owned by different trusts, but it's all within the family. Can they combine them to make one lot? Is that a difference in, in selling? Sure. I, I don't see the decision we're making as being.
Well, I mean, if you sell one lot versus three, that's a financial hardship.
It's a difference, but I think if you're going to, and as much as every single application is on its own precedence because facts are different across the board, I think you start getting dicey when you're saying, oh, well, what's the property tax? And that's, that's what you're using as, I guess I sit here and say, if you didn't know about the cost of the property tax, take that up. Where do you stand?
I mean, the cost of the sale of the land, like if, if this is not granted and they combine everything, like, that's, it, it's like cutting someone's savings from nine hundred thousand down to four fifty, you know?
And that's the risk of when, that's the risk of putting savings in land that's not developed. I mean, different from, and we've had it, we've had it here where people have had lots that the zoning changes.
Right, but that other one that you, you brought up had much greater impacts on neighboring properties.
But he still had a legal lot that was tax-buildable, so why is it different?
But we do also consider.
He had other, did they have other setback, I forget the particulars, but they had other, I thought they had other setback issues and whatnot that were putting them a lot closer to other neighbors, that the situation would be.
Well, I mean, it, it did put them closer, but I, I sit here and say, if you want to look at buildable lot as buildable lot, period, end of story, then why is zoning even here? In, in many aspects, why do we have control over what we have control over? If it's buildable, it's buildable, call it a day.
No, that's, that's, that's why we're voting on it.
Because it's not being considered buildable now.
The zoning changes. And I guess I sit here and say, when the town voted, we function as a town, we function in town meeting. If you can't show up to town meeting, I've had times where I couldn't show up to town meeting. I was angry, but that was my own fault. People showed up to town meeting, people voted to go from one to two. If the town, if people of the town don't like it, then they should put in for town meeting to have it go back to one-acre lots. And that's, you can do that. But the town largely spoke on wanting one, going from one to two. Why should we ignore that?
Because they voted in nineteen eighty-seven.
All right, and circumstances change, as the circumstances change for the applicants here. All right, so I look at that and I think that a tremendous injustice has been done here. If the town was doing the right thing, they would not have been collecting tax dollars, calling things buildable lots when they weren't buildable lots because they knew that these were zoned to two acres and they were not one-acre lots and buildable.
Except for, under the five years, they had buildable lots. So it was right for the town, I'm going to go with the five years because I, I can't remember if it's three or five, so I'll give the benefit and say five, okay? So the town was right to tax it because for five years, it was buildable. You can't put it on the town to be responsible.
Then why did they tax it for more than five years?
Because you can't put it on the town to look, that's like us putting on Paul to look at every single family suite that's ever been issued in the town to make sure that it's not an illegal apartment. You just can't do it.
Well, you say, you say that, and I know that, this is not germane, but it came up before. And Paul said, that is my job to make sure the family suites aren't featuring departments, but that's not germane.
But it's not the assessor's job to go out and establish if a lot is buildable or not. They don't know if conservation has changed, they don't know, it has moved, that is not their job to do.
Then why do they assess some lots as non-buildable and some lots as buildable?
Because someone went in there and said, is this lot buildable? Now, do you have to go in and ask them? They're not going to go and ask you if this is a buildable lot. We, I've just had a couple of them come on, she asked for a lot to be not buildable. She asked for it not to be buildable because she didn't want to be taxed on it as that anymore.
I just, if, if the money part of it is what's going to hinder you, I sit here and say, I, I don't see that as being the basis, and that's.
The money part, the money part is, is definitely a piece of it. The other piece is that, and again, I know we're not bound by precedent, but the precedent to me here is important, that after this zoning was done, after the town, whatever the vote was, that it's going to be two acres, they continued to build one-acre lot houses. And that got through the town approval processes, all right? Now, yes, a lot of time has gone by, and I'm sure if you went to the Cashman's and you said, you know what? Fast forward twenty twenty-three, you're going to get run over, these are not lots, are not going to be sold as, as one acres. Sell them tomorrow. I'm sure they would have done it, but the, but the implicit promise made was that by doing these as one-acre lots when it was done, that they would be buildable lots in the, in the future. And it was demonstrated by the fact that they built houses in ninety-one, ninety-four, ninety-five, and a building permit was issued in ninety-seven, ninety-eight.
Okay, so we give credit to them for being smart enough to split up their lot prior, prior to the zoning change to secure their one acre. But we're not going to look at them and, and question when we say, why didn't you pay attention to the five years?
What's this five years? Five, they, they have been, they were building for ten years after that.
Yeah, and they, they got lucky. I mean, they got lucky.
I don't, I don't agree they got lucky.
I will say one thing, ten years ago, you could bring.
All right, so ten years ago, thirty, twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, you could bring, uh, application plans and everything you needed and hand it to the bill inspector, and you could walk out with a building card. Things have changed.
Thank you.
We do it on, uh, we do it online. It goes through planning, it goes to make sure you pay your taxes, it goes to DPW. There's at least eight sign-offs that need to be done for any, any building permit, kitchen remodel, addition, or to build a house. So the process to get a building permit has changed. Now more, more people are looking at the application as per ninety-seven when those.
So they're crossing their Ts and dotting their Is to make sure stuff's done right.
Yes, so I'm just saying that the application process has changed in the past ten years, so that it's more.
I mean, part of this is proportionality though, right? One of my first meetings, I think, there was a, a case where there was like a large house, there was like these folks' retirement dream, dream house. And to have a soaring atrium as they walked in, they needed like a four-foot variance. Yeah, exactly.
I said no to that.
And, and yeah, and I thought it was, uh, vain and silly. But it didn't affect any butters because the entire house was below grade for the, for the road and anyone else's sight. And, and so like proportionally, the negative impact was so small that it was less than the very small amount of variance that they were asking for. And I think in this case, we have the opposite case, right? It's like this, uh, very large hardship that is being offered to, for us to consider compared to a very large ask for variance. And whether those things are proportional in this case or not, I guess it's up for each of us to decide. But I don't know that, uh, it's an automatic no, just because it's a large ask.
All right, so I.
I don't know if anyone was changing their mind.
Well, I, 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 this is going to rehash some of the things that have already been discussed, but I kind of want to put them all in a structured space, and maybe this will help a little bit. So first to editorialize a little bit. I personally, if I had been, I was three years old when this was voted on. If I had been a voting resident of North Andover, I wouldn't have wanted two acres zoning, right? I wouldn't have thought that that was a good idea, I wouldn't have asked for it. But, uh, that's not this board's decision. We don't get to decide whether that was a good decision or not. That's not where we are. And it's not the leeway that we have as a board. So then going into what's being requested of us. Findings are, are asking for a decision of fact, right? We have very little, in my opinion, we have very little leeway to decide what we can and can't allow within findings. And on the minimum lot size request, I'm sympathetic to the fact that this reduced the value of your land. But there isn't a formal agreement that would grandfather in lots from this time. And, you know, for me, a simple test is that if, if you had, i- i- if this lot had been built upon pre-change and then the one, someone wanted to tear it down and rebuild on it, I don't think we would even be asked for a variance. We would be, as far as a finding, we'd be asked for variances to make it happen. And, you know, we might be sympathetic to those variances because there was a house there. But like, there would not be a finding of fact saying that this would be a buildable lot of land. And so to me, the letter of the law is quite clear, and it's very hard for me to, to affirm a finding in this case on, on the minimum lot size. There's also been a request for a finding with regards to the wetland law. And, you know, we've been discussing this now for six months. And, you know, this is the first time that we've had to, to weigh in, so I want to actually weigh in on it. We've had enough discussion. And the crux to me is the what, whether the usage of the word "and" means either or both. I'm going to change the way that I phrase this because I think it's actually important to not repeat the same word, right? What we mean is either or both. And we have since the beginning of this law's implementation, used either. And I'm not going to try to get into textualist or originalist arguments except to say that invalidating the way that we have done the law for thirty years based on, uh, an attempt to reuse a word and an attempt, and when it's very clear what the law is meant to do, seems, seems very challenging for this board to do. If you want to take that to a court and have a professional judge decide that, you are more than welcome to. But I, I, I must claim some humility here that I don't feel that I can overrule that much of pre-existing, the usage of this law, uh, based on this. And so it's very hard for me in both cases to find, to, to affirm any kind of findings. Now, variances are where we have a lot more leeway. You know, we have to, as the discussion has been, been going through, some, some room for personal judgment, for subjective judgment. And so we are asked for variances on minimum lot size. And we have three lots, we have thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Lots thirteen and fourteen are asking for basically a, a, you know, a fifty percent variance, right? The, the lot is half the size that, that the zoning requires. And that is a lot, and that is more than we would typically allow, especially for two neighboring lots owned by the same person that could be combined into a single complying lot by that part of the law. I feel very squeamish about that, and I am very sympathetic to the amount of tax money that has been sunk into those lots. And I go back and forth, back and forth on this particular one of how I feel about those two lots. Lot fifteen is quite a bit larger, it's about an acre and a half. And we are, you know, it, we are asked for a much smaller variance on that land. And I am much more inclined to grant that one. You know, that one is, that to me, pretty safely over the hump into territory that I could understand accepting. And so I'm still unsure on thirteen and fourteen, but fifteen, I, I, I'm okay with granting. And then on variances for the buildable area, it's, where you ask for something even bigger. You know, if you look at the line that the hundred-foot buffer draws, and the hundred-foot buffer is not where you can build, but it is what counts as buildable lot area. We're talking, I think it's eleven percent and fourteen percent respectively for the two lots. It is very, very small. And if you combine the two lots into one, you still wouldn't have enough buildable area for one lot. And again, that's a really hard ask, and that one, I just, I, I can't, I can't get to. I, I can't accept that one. For lot fifteen again, though, the, the ask is much smaller, it's a twenty-eight percent variance on buildable lot area. And that is one that I can grant. And so for me, it's coming down to, you know, no's on thirteen and fourteen for the buildable lot area and a yes on fifteen. That's a lot. But I want to try to put it all in one place.
Very well put. Anyone else have anything? I know this is one that we have spent many months on, and it is a struggle.
So just to like, put a, back on the numbers game for that last idea, that'd be essentially cutting the value of thirteen and fourteen, even if they were combined to zero, a thousand dollars maybe.
It would be, well, if they were combined, you know, they would have to come again to us, right, and ask. And we would have to reconsider what we feel about that buildable lot area.
See, I don't have my thirteen anymore, but what does that give you?
It would give you, it would still give you less than thirty percent of what you need for buildable lot area.
And it sound, I mean, we haven't all weighed in on that, but it sounded like to you that's still a, a zero now.
It, it's pretty hard, right? And like, I am very sympathetic to what, I, I don't know the answer. You know, I would have to reconsider it under those circumstances.
Anyone want to resign?
What?
Anyone want to resign?
But it's, um, but, and, and I, and I'm absolutely sympathetic to the amount of lost value, because you're right. It would bring it down to a thousand dollars worth of land, right? And unless you combined it with lot fifteen, right? And then you have a larger lot and you can sell it as a larger lot that people can walk around on and use as their, as their personal space, but they cannot build another house on. And so it's still reducing that value quite a bit. And that is a hard pill to swallow. It's tough, I don't know. I don't have a good answer to what I would do if I were asked to do those two lots together.
Well, if, um, if, if these variances are not approved, does that put any restriction on them coming back for another variance at another time?
So what I, what I, I don't know is.
If they change a lot.
So you have to have a big enough change, essentially. There was one application that had come in front of the zoning board regarding building a building, and they had made changes to it, I'm not sure, do you remember that one, the hair salon? By Al Prime?
Yes, I remember that one.
Yes.
Okay, who was it that made the decision that it wasn't different enough? Because it wasn't the zone, I don't want to, was it the zoning board that made, said?
Yeah, I think it was us.
Was it us?
Yeah. But it was a, you know, it was smaller than combining two lots into one, that's a pretty big change.
I mean, I, I'll say this, so they'd have to wait unless the change is big enough. So I, I would say if they went from three lots to one, my opinion, and then what they would be requesting, I, I would think that that would be a big enough change that they, they wouldn't have to wait. But, I mean, that would take time anyway if that's a decision that they, the route they choose to go, if it doesn't pass here.
Yeah, because they would have to do all the paperwork to sell all of the one, all to one.
Well, no, it's all in trusts and the same family, so essentially they're getting a lawyer to redraft deeds and transfer.
Sure, that takes time though.
It, it takes time, I mean, you're not talking two years if the change wasn't necessarily big enough. But like I say, I, I would say that going from three lots to one lot and what their request would.
Or three, or three lots to two lots, if we think that fifteen is.
If they can get the CBA.
Right.
You still have that issue of the CBA, and that's just.
Well, I think.
And they, they actually might be losing less value if they can't sell one of the lots than finally doing it altogether.
I'll say, I've been on the zoning board for eight plus years, and there's very few hard ones. So I'm, I'm sympathetic to everybody.
Can we vote on the finding and just get that stuff out of the way, because I don't think we're going to vote on that one?
Well, Jen, I have the whole board voting, right?
You do.
Okay. So the way it would work is, I'm not sure necessarily what, if it matters what order in terms of if we do finding for thirteen, finding for fourteen, finding for fifteen, or do finding variance, finding variance.
Does it matter?
But I think at the end of the day, whether we vote on the finding or not, I, I will say this, in terms of the finding, when you look at the finding, there's, there's no way I would overturn, and that's because the inspector of buildings did exactly what he was supposed to do. He's looking at what the zoning is today and what they're asking, and what they're asking doesn't meet for the zoning.
Yeah.
So I think that's probably a no-brainer for all of us. So if we all want to be able to have some kind of a win somewhere, that's an easy one.
That is what I was kind of thinking of, is have some movement, I don't know.
I, I can see that, but then right behind it, we're, we're jumping with the variance.
Still right back at it.
We're doing them all tonight, so right at the close, so.
Yes.
Can I direct something to?
No.
That's just amongst us.
Well, you can look at them if you like, but they can't...
Okay, well, then I'm just going to hypothesize what's on my mind.
Please do. That's what we're here for.
Well, they've heard our dialogue. They can see where we're coming from. I would like them to have the opportunity. There may, this may have spurred some thoughts or ideas for them. I'd like them to...
They can't.
It's too late.
It's too late. So at this point, the only option...
We brought that up at the last meeting.
The only option...
Well, the intensity has increased, right?
Yes, correct.
The only option is for the board to vote yes or no. There's no more time for the applicant to do anything. If this has shed new light, again, there's the option to appeal any decision we make, whether that be by in a butter or whether that be by the applicant. There is the decision to change their application around, and if it is different enough, come back before two years. There is the option to, I guess, is that all of the options? I think that's all of the options. So, but unfortunately, if our dialogue has changed their viewpoint in any way, it is unfortunately too late.
It does seem like the only things that they might do differently would be to combine lots, which would be probably a substantial enough change to come back before two years, so...
I would argue that. I could be wrong. I don't know everything.
Yeah.
Come on.
I certainly know that.
I got slapped in the face tonight, so I'm told I don't know everything. Anybody else? Any last words? I know many of us kind of just want to let this drag out and drag out and drag out, because then we don't...
We still have Meramec, guys.
We don't have to make a decision. We still have Meramec and another application. So... I'm... Huh?
I think we vote.
We vote? Is everybody ready to vote?
Who is voting?
So we have, we have the sitting board members.
Oh, yeah, all right, cool.
See, we, you were so input into the discussion that you didn't even realize.
Yeah, no, not even...
Well, you guys can bring things, even if you're not voting, you can still bring things that we don't think of and a different viewpoint, so it's always helpful. What I'm going to do is I'm going to have you do finding for 13. We will vote, and then we will do variance for 13.
Okay.
Vote.
That's the order I have, so that's...
So 13, finding, 13 variance.
Yep.
14, finding, 14 variance.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. We have to vote in the, we have to vote in the affirmative, right, to overturn...
It's opposite what we would do, where so it would be, it would be...
Well, the language I was going to say is, we move to overturn a finding pursuant. So we would vote no, if we're opposed to it, or yes, if we're for it.
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, a yes vote would be to overturn the ruling.
So if you want to keep the finding, let's do this. If you want to keep the finding and uphold what the building inspector did, you vote no. If you think the building inspector made a mistake, you vote yes. Does that make sense to everybody voting?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Do I have to reference any plans?
The finding, I'm going to put the plans on to the variances, but typically, we do that if it's approved, right? The, all of the plans, repressing all the plans.
At the time I'm doing the reading, we don't know if it's approved or not.
No, but I'm talking about for the variance.
Yeah.
Okay, so while you read, I'll figure out all the documents.
All right, okay. We move, okay, first I, if I just read these, it doesn't reference the lot number, right? If I start reading from here?
Yes.
So we don't know what we're talking about.
So you wanted to, we move to overturn the finding for Zero Winter Street map.
Okay, so I'll do that. We move to overturn the finding for Zero Winter Street map, 104. C parcel 0110, AKA lot 13, North End of Mass, 01845 in the R1 zoning district, pursuant to Town of North End of Zoning Bylaw, section 195-10.8B in the R1 zoning district, for the purpose of overturning the building commissioner's denial dated May 19, 2023. Specifically, applicant seeks a finding from Town of North End of Zoning Bylaws from the requirements of section 195-7.1 Lot Area Attachment 3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements in section 195-7.1A contiguous Buildable Area, CBA, for the purpose of overturning the building commissioner's denial dated May 19, 2023, and allowing the construction of a single-family home and associated improvements on the property. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire Chair.
What's that?
I don't think you need that part.
Oh, you don't? Just for the...
That's just for the reading. But you're okay, you're good.
All right.
All right, I will be the first, first to take a vote, and it's...
Second.
Oh, can I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Okay, I will be the first to take the vote, and I say no. Ron?
No.
Michael?
No.
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 So the board's unanimous on no for overturning. Onto the variance, and I'm working on your paperwork.
Are we going to go with the variances one by one?
Do you want me to just do the findings, if you look in the paperwork up?
I'll do the findings first.
Okay, you can do the findings first.
That way we can pull out the right sheets, yeah. We move to overturn a finding at Zero, pursuant to Zero Winter Street, AKA lot 14, map 104. C parcel 0149, North End of Mass, 01845, in the R1 zoning district, pursuant to Town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section 195-10.8B in the R1 zoning district, for the purpose of overturning the building commissioner's denial dated August 2, 2023. Specifically, applicant seeks a finding from Town of North End of Zoning Bylaws from the requirements of section 195-7.1 Lot Area Attachment 3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements. Section 195-7.1A contiguous Buildable Area, CBA, and section 195-7.2 Street Frontage Attachment 3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for the purpose of overturning the building commissioner's denial dated August 2, 2023, and allowing the construction of a single-family home and associated improvements on the property.
Second.
Who seconded?
Um, Baskin.
Oh, a second. Jen, you got that? Michael, second? I'll be the first to vote. I vote no.
No.
Michael? Frank?
No.
Steve? It's unanimous, no vote.
We move to overturn a finding at, for Zero Winter Street, AKA lot 15, map 104. C parcel 0150, North End of Mass, 01845, in the R1 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a finding pursuant to Town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section 195-10.8B in the R1 zoning district, for the purpose of overturning the building commissioner's denial dated August 2, 2023. Specifically, the applicant seeks a finding from Town of North End of Zoning Bylaws for the requirements, from the requirements of section 195-7.1 Lot Area Attachment 3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements. Section 195-7.1A contiguous Buildable Area, CBA, and section 195-7.2 Street Frontage Attachment 3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for the purpose of overturning the building commissioner's denial dated August 2, 2023, and allowing the construction of a single-family home and associated improvements on the property.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, we'll go to Steve. I'll be the first to vote with a no vote. Ron?
No.
Michael? Frank?
No.
Steve? It's unanimous, no for the finding on lot 15.
Okay.
Now we are moving on to the variances. Does anyone have their variance paperwork for lot 13? I can't seem to find it in my...
I do.
My paper.
This lot, that should be variance and finding, they're both there.
Thank you, much appreciated. Okay. So... Does anyone on finding? Before you start reading, I just want to make sure the board's in agreement on this. So I was going to have, in terms of papers for the variances, I was going to have the plot plans that were done, the sketches done of the renderings for the house, houses that they gave. The...
We don't really even need the houses, though, do they? Do we for this purpose?
Well, the problem is, is that if it gets a yes, then that's what they're subjected to.
Right, so if you say yes to any of the lots, then they have to hold to the design.
Because I don't know where the board is voting, if this passes, this is what they have to build. They can't build something higher, they can't build something wider, they can't build something deeper. This is, this is what they've committed to. And that matters because...
I guess I thought those are just representational.
I'm looking at this as...
Maybe it's not significantly different, like if it's siding versus shingle, it's...
Right, but in...
Not that detail on that.
And they can go smaller.
No, but in terms of focus.
Yeah.
So I was going to do that. The packet that was provided to us, which unfortunately, I don't know if there's a date. There's no joint, no date, so I just call it the joint's middle, the joint, well... Yeah, there's no binder with tabs. This, is there anything else that's of significance that the board thinks should be included?
I think it's plenty.
Huh?
It's plenty.
That's plenty? Okay. If you think it's plenty, I'm going to go with you on that's plenty.
Okay.
Are we doing these variances, are we voting on them individually?
Yes.
Okay.
So 13 is going to be up first. Another what? Does anyone have the letter that was with the binder? It's very possible.
I don't know. It might be lost, I don't think.
This?
Yes. Oh, good. Steve or Frank, he's got it.
It's only a half.
Okay, so then you can reference the letter from Johnson and Bronstein dated September 29 with binder.
Bornstein.
Bornstein, sorry. 13.
Okay.
So...
Just wanted to stack them up here and I'll look at them and call them out as I see them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How did I go from referencing the map? I read this, we move to grant a variance...
For Zero Wind Street.
For Zero, okay.
Lot 13.
Yeah.
And then move to what?
Pursuant to...
To Town of North End of, and then read each one.
Okay. We move to grant a variance at Zero Winter Street, map 104. C parcel 0110, AKA lot 13, North End of Mass, 01845, in the R1 zoning district, pursuant to Town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section 195-7.1 Lot Area Attachment 3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements, and section 195-7. A, 7.1A in the R1 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new single-family home and associated improvements on the property. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section 195-7.1 Lot Area Attachment 3, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements in the R1 zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested a lot area needing a relief variance of 41,233 square feet, i.e. 47% of the lot area proposed, 40, I'm sorry, 47%. The lot area proposed is 45,887 square feet, i.e. 53%. And the lot area required per table 2 is 87,120 square feet, i.e. 100%. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section 195-7.1A contiguous Buildable Area, CBA, in the R1 zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested CBA needing relief variance of 48,848 square feet, i.e. 56%. The CBA proposed is 16,492 square feet, i.e. 19%. And the CBA required is 65,340 square feet, 75%.
Wait, are we just doing, we should just be doing the first one?
Yes.
Right, not the second one?
I'm just doing, that's just, that's...
That's just lot 13.
That's just lot 13.
Oh, but we're doing both variances at once? We're voting on both variances at once?
No.
We should just be voting on one variance?
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, both there, oh.
Oh, no.
There's three of the variances.
Right, you read both, no, there's two variances and you read both of them, right?
Correct.
So shouldn't we just read the first one?
No.
I don't think, that came up before.
So we're going to do both of these at the same time, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's collective, it's a...
And I'm going to reference into it a plan by End of a Consultants, Inc., dated June 2, 2023, showing the plot of land.
That's one, two, three, four.
Yeah. Let's see. Architectural drawings by Builders Plan Service, dated...
Yeah, I think the date is a very old date.
January 20, well, with revisions, May 27, 2010, consisting of sheets one through... One through four, plus a first floor and second floor plan without a sheet number. And letter by Johnson and Bornstein, Bornstein LLC, Attorneys at Law, dated September 29, 2023, addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And...
I'd say with 31 tabs.
A binder with 31 tabs titled "Joints in Middle of Odell F. Cashman Trust, Owner of Lot 104C-110, Frank Cashman Realty Trust, Owner of Lot 104C-149, and Joanne M. Cashman Revocable Trust, Owner of Lot 104C-150, for petition of a variance and petition of a finding."
Can I have a second?
I'll second you.
Okay, I'll be the first to vote with a no.
Yes.
Michael?
No.
Frank?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
So it is a... So it is a, uh, three to two? No. What's that? Okay. Make a try, I've heard it already.
Okay, so these I'm going to repeat, but I need the other plans for.
For fourteen.
Lot fourteen. I'll stop that. We move to grant a variance for zero Winter Street, AKA lot fourteen, map one oh four point C parcel zero one four nine, North End of Mass zero one eight four five in the R one zoning district pursuant to town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point one lot area, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements, section one ninety-five dash seven point one A contiguous buildable area, and section one ninety-five dash seven point two, street frontage, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements in the R one zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new single-family home and associated improvements on the property. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point one lot area, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements in the R one zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested a lot area needing a relief variance of forty-three thousand two seventy-three square feet, i.e. fifty percent. The lot area proposed is forty-three thousand eight hundred forty-seven square feet, i.e. fifty percent. And the lot area required per table two is eighty-seven thousand one hundred twenty square feet, i.e. one hundred percent. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point one A contiguous buildable area, CBA, in the R one zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested CBA needing a relief variance of fifty-six thousand nineteen square feet, i.e. sixty-four percent. The CBA proposed is nine thousand three hundred twenty-one square feet, i.e. eleven percent. And the CBA required is sixty-five thousand three hundred forty square feet, seventy-five percent. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point two, street frontage, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements in the R one zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested street frontage needing a relief variance of twenty-five feet, i.e. fourteen percent. The street frontage proposed is a hundred fifty feet, i.e. eighty-six percent. And the street frontage required is a hundred seventy-five feet, i.e. one hundred percent. Going to reference. Same, oh, same plans. We're going to reference a plot plan of lot fourteen, prepared by Andover Consultants, Inc., dated June second, twenty twenty-three. And architectural plans by Builders Plan Service with revisions dated through May twenty-seventh, twenty-ten, consisting of sheets one through four, plus first and second floor floor plans that are not numbered. And the letter by Johnson and Bornstein LLC dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, addressed to the zoning board of appeals, as well as the booklet with thirty-one tabs in it titled Joints in Middle of Odell F. Cashman Trust, owner of lot one oh four C dash one ten, Frank Cashman Realty Trust, owner of lot one oh four C dash one forty-nine, and Joan M. Cashman Revocable Trust, owner of lot one oh four C dash one fifty, for petition of a variance and a petition for a finding.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I'll be the first to vote. I vote no.
Yes.
Michael.
No.
Yes.
No.
Three to two. And lot fifteen, please.
Okay. We move to grant variances for zero Winter Street, AKA lot fifteen, map one oh four point C parcel zero one fifty, North End of Mass zero one eight four five in the R one zoning district pursuant to town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point one lot area, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements, section one ninety-five dash seven point one A contiguous buildable area, and section one ninety-five dash seven point two, street frontage, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements in the R one zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new single-family home and associated improvements on the property. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point one lot area, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements in the R one zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested a lot area needing a relief variance of twenty-two thousand five hundred ninety-two square feet, i.e. twenty-six percent. The lot area proposed is sixty-four thousand five hundred twenty-eight square feet, seventy-four percent. And the lot area required per table two is eighty-seven thousand one hundred twenty square feet, i.e. one hundred percent. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point one A contiguous buildable area, CBA, in the R one zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested CBA needing a relief variance of twenty-four thousand four hundred fifty-two square feet, i.e. twenty-eight percent. The CBA proposed is forty thousand eight hundred eighty-eight square feet, i.e. forty-seven percent. And the CBA required is sixty-five thousand three hundred forty square feet, seventy-five percent. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town of North End of Zoning Bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point two, street frontage, attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements in the R one zoning district. Specifically, applicant has requested street frontage needing a relief variance of twenty-five feet, i.e. fourteen percent. The street frontage proposed is a hundred fifty feet, i.e. eighty-six percent. And the street frontage required is a hundred and seventy-five feet, i.e. one, one hundred percent. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office.
You can skip that part.
Skip that. We'll reference plans, plot plan for lot fifteen, prepared by Andover Consultants, Inc., dated June second, twenty twenty-three. Architectural plans by Builders Plan Service with dates through revision set June twenty-seventh, twenty, twenty-ten, consisting of sheets one through four, plus first floor and second floor plans without sheet numbers. And a letter from Johnson and Bornstein LLC dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three to the zoning board of appeals, and a booklet with thirty-one tabs in it titled Joints in Middle of Odell F. Cashman Trust, owner of lot one oh four C dash one ten, Frank Cashman Realty Trust, owner of lot one oh four C dash one forty-nine, and Joan M. Cashman Revocable Trust, owner of lot one oh four C dash one fifty, petition of a variance and petition for a finding.
Can I have a second?
I second.
I'll be the first to vote with a no. Ron?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
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 So that's one to four. And that now concludes the Winter Street Matters. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Okay, oh, no. I lost my thing. Okay, up next is three fifteenth from Pike Street. Merrimack College. Yeah, take all of this, I need it all from my.
He'd like his thirteen back.
Just in case. If you disassemble it, that's fine.
I think I disassembled it.
That's fine.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Next time I will ask. It was probably rude of me to take it apart on you.
It's okay.
No reason for us to save this stuff, is there?
You don't have to, I do. That one's yours. Ah, okay. So before you dive in, I was informed that there was an issue. There's an issue with sending out the certifies for the last hearing. Right? Like, I guess, I guess some of Butters weren't properly notified of last month's hearing. This is from my understanding.
Was it for this?
It was renoticed.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, we had, we renoticed, yes.
Right. So for the people that possibly missed out and don't know how to get online and watch old hearings, if you can give, and I know we didn't cover much because we were scamming out, scrimmaging out of here, if you could give this kind of a recap.
Sure.
Just because I don't want to, there's a lot of people, so.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Jeff Doggett, Executive Vice President, Merrimack College, also resident, eighty-four Johnson Street. The project is a two-building residential housing complex on the corner of Andover Street and one fourteen. It'll be five hundred and forty beds. This is the large grassy area directly in front of the church. The design is taking into account keeping a viewing corridor available to still see the front of the church, which we recognize is both important for us as well as, as the community. The five hundred and forty beds is a direct result of our attempt at getting a housing project done after the Royal Crest project did not go forward. And in that community process, the college had stated multiple times, if things can't be built at the Royal Crest project, we would do so on the corner. And so we've come forward with the project at hand. Their request here is there's a thirty-five-foot height restriction on the site. We're seeking a fourth story to get to, I think it's anywhere between forty-seven and forty-eight feet, depending on which of the two buildings and the median you're talking about. And today's meeting is in, is in many respects our response to several questions that had come forward in that prior meeting, which I'm happy to walk through at the chair's convenience.
I'm sorry. Okay, so now basically we've recapped, right?
Yep.
Okay. What do we got now? I know you guys provided us some documents regarding the DOT.
Yep. So we can go to the next slide. So what, what I've done here is I've tried to encapsulate some of the major questions that came up in the meeting. I know there were some additional ones that were also mentioned. I will try to capture those as we go through, but I think the overarching one was, was the dimension. There was a lot of questions about would the one fourteen project, once it's built, will it make the building feel closer to the roadway or further away? We've got an answer to that. Was there any analysis done about the proposal to fit within the thirty-five-foot restriction? And we've got a lot of documentation on that. And then there was a lot of conversation amongst the zoning board about a preference to see what would happen if what we call the north residential housing, which is the two-story wood-framed buildings that we've built housing for interior of the campus. What would happen if that was literally picked up and put on the site? And so we've responded to each of those. So if you want to walk through, the first question was just the, the roadway dimensions. If you could go to the next one, please. So what we had showed, and this is on, on the one fourteen side, what we had showed is the black distance is, the black font is thirty-two feet from the property line. The red dimension is it's fifty-four feet from the current curb line. And the blue is the distance the building would be from the curb line of the currently designed one fourteen project. And that would be the closest dimension. And then working further up one fourteen, the dimension, I'm sorry, if you could go back to that just for one second? That's okay. That dimension would grow as you drive further away from the intersection heading towards Middleton, where that dimension would be sixty-five feet on the remaining front portion of that, of the building, and then get to seventy-eight feet as the building jogs in. And then just in anticipation of being asked what that would mean on Andover Street, if you could, to the next slide, we wanted to provide that as well. It's thirty-five feet to the property line. It's forty-eight, I think it is, and forty-seven under the current. And then that would actually shrink on that side just slightly to forty-one and forty-two feet. When we did a, a site walkthrough with the planning board, one of the things that had become important, I think, for, for people was to understand these dimensions. So we were not asked this question, but I thought it, it would be appropriate to just bring this up, and the next slide will bear out why. So what we did was we also took from Andover to the building that runs along one fourteen and the dimensions as to what that would be. And then on the right-hand side is also the dimensions from the, the property line at a hundred and twenty-nine feet, the current curb line at one hundred and fifty-two feet, and the blue distances from the future curb at a hundred and fifty-nine feet. The reason I wanted to show this was for two reasons. The first is because I think it shows that there is a significant amount of open space on that corner. And while the conversation, the question was specific to the buildings itself, the reality is there is a significant amount of green space on that corner that allows someone to feel like it's not like coming in, the building is not coming in at them. The second is although it's not a hundred feet, we were asked by the chair specifically, we had used two oh three turn Pike Street as an example of a fifty-foot building. And the question was what would happen to the site if, if the building, our building was actually at a hundred feet? And while this doesn't show what a hundred feet is, I think what it, what it does show is, is that the, the proposed building in the upper right-hand corner, the one running along one fourteen, would jog itself all the way down so that the front-facing part of the building would actually be lower or further away from the curb than the backside of the, the main facility. And it would dramatically alter the amount of space running left and right on the site and would force it to go much higher. And we'll get into that in another slide, but that was the reason we have these two dimensions. If you go to the next. This just gives us sense of how large a space that corner open area is. It's half an acre, which is roughly equal to what's the interior. And then again, at A three, what is further interior. And so you could see, as I had mentioned, if the building jogs further back, what it really does is it just eats up some open space until the point where the wings no longer are viable, and then they've got to go up top. And as well as the site starts to shrink, the more you come in. But again, from, from our perspective, one of the things that was important is while the conversation really gets focused on how close either building is to the sidewalk or to the curb cut, I'm sorry, not curb cut, but the curb, the reality is, is that's a significant open space on the corner as we had designed it to be. Let me keep going. Another point that we, we sort of got into trying to do the math on, on the fly was just, what is the FAR of the space? There's no FAR requirement on this particular district. But if one was to look at just the site itself, the FAR would be just a hair under point eight. And if you go to the next one, there is always, there is a, when we acquired this parcel, the parcel included the church and Austin Hall. And so if we were to look at the entire site including those two buildings, the FAR gets to just about eighty. And that's an important part for our, in our perspective. If you go to the next slide is, which is just what that means elsewhere. Again, there's no requirement in our particular, our three-location on the campus, but directly across the street, it's one point five. And you can see elsewhere, it's either at point seven five or point one five along, along the one fourteen corridor. So we felt from an FAR perspective, this was not a, a, a building that was too far out of, out of field. And, and we'll get into why that is as we look at the next, which is analysis has been done on what would happen to propose a thirty-five-foot height. So the answer to that question is just a little bit of history first. to that question is just a little bit of history first. So, back in 2021, before I was with the planning board, I, and we were already into Royal Crest, I was asked what would happen if Royal Crest doesn't go forward. And this is the master plan that I showed. This is obviously much larger than what we're talking about here. It's not even the same configuration of what we're talking about here, and it doesn't even have the same type of buildings. I only do this because in this, this particular view, there were buildings that were either four or going to be five stories, and this was approximately going to be 900 to 1,000 beds. And this was never approved by anyone, so I don't mean to suggest that anyone sort of spread some, some dust on it and said, this is exactly what it is. I use this as an example because if you go to the next slide, when we went to Royal Crest, the idea was that this was going to be 1,000 beds. And was going to be five stories at 69 feet. Through that process, the college was asked by the developer to cut that, that number back. By the way, the 1,000 was important to us because in order to make the finances work for the developer, and to make the project financially viable for the town, we stopped building housing ourselves, and we're renting more and more at Royal Crest so that when this development would happen, they'd be able to move in at the volume we were discussing. The next slide, we were asked to cut that back, which we did, which was 800 beds, not 1,000. The height remained, at least on the corner closest to the street. Again, no bearing on this particular project in terms of heights, that's not the point I'm trying to make. I'm just simply trying to get to the, to a bed count number that makes sense from our perspective, which brings us to the next slide. So, we originally looked at what would happen if we put 800 beds on this corner.
In the two buildings?
Yes. Even before we knew what two buildings were. What would it take to take 800 beds that was supposed to be at Royal Crest and put it on the corner? And we redesigned the master plan of that. What we ended up was, was that was going to end up being a seven-story, two-building project, where the length of the 114 building would have even been longer. And the main reason for that, other than the fact that it's a significant number of beds, is that the Royal Crest project were all going to be apartments. And this is any, is actually just your typical dorm style. So, there's no living rooms, there's no kitchen. So, all that square feet would also have gone in if we were just trying to replicate what was at Royal Crest. We obviously thought that was not viable, right? And so, we said, okay, that's not going to work. And then, the next thing we did is, we said, we'll not do apartments, and let's do the type of housing that we're discussing today, which is your traditional-style housing. And we tried 800 beds, and that only got us down to six stories, which we also thought was a complete non-starter, not just in terms of a regulatory over, a review, but we didn't think that that made any sense for our site or for the community. So, we then went back and looked at what a three-story, a four-story, and a five-story was. So, with that as a background, the 35-foot, to make a 35-foot, if you want to scroll down to the next one, please. Trying to maintain a viewing corridor, and trying to maintain open space, what you have here is the buildings that you're, that you're seeing now in the pink, and in essence, we're taking the top floors off, and they're going somewhere, so they're just going left and right. The problem with that is, is that it makes the length of 114 much longer. Now, it's 500 feet. It significantly reduces the viewing corridor, which we'll get in a three-dimensional view in a second. It eats up a lot more ground space, so we're now dealing with more stormwater issues. It's somewhere between 5% and 6% more expensive, and on a, what is now a $90 million project, that's a significant amount of money. And there's less ground to actually create a stormwater detention system underneath that will actually make sense. Having said that, we did want to show, because we were asked, what this looks like at 35 feet, which is, I think, we, we feel, and I think anyone reasonably would conclude, is silly to the point of, would make, you know, I actually considered whether it would make sense to bring this before the committee, because I think anyone would look at it and say, you're, you've almost gone out of your way to make it look bad, but it doesn't fit elsewhere on the site. It's the more, it's the other corner that's actually more cumbersome, if you go to the next slide, which is what happens, is the other building sneaks closer to the corner and starts eating up the very thing that we were trying to preserve. So, that brought us to, okay, what happens if we go from six to five? And if you go to the next slide, the two five-story buildings would have accommodated 700 beds in the traditional and, and suite style. It would have done 550 beds in the apartment, which would have worked financially viably, but that would have got us to 59 feet. And we didn't think that that was appropriate. So, we determined that neither a six, nor a five, nor a three was appropriate. We then said, okay, what about a four, because we thought that was more reasonable and defensible in light of the number of buildings that fit within the 47 to 50-foot range, and either on the campus or close to the campus. The next several slides are those buildings.
Can you, can I ask you to go back?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. So, in the diagrams that you gave us, my, the church.
Correct.
You have, it's identified, I'm going to say it's 48, yeah.
48.
48, it says 48 feet.
Yep.
My question is, from what point, is that from the dome, or is that from the building itself?
I think it's the, go ahead, Jeff.
It excludes the domes, the steeples on a lot of these fixtures, so it should be to the way we would normally calculate the building height, the highest point of the roof. So, the church would be the ridge line of the, of the middle of the church in that example.
So, then, the, okay, when I, okay, I went at the first meeting here, I looked at it, my concern was that those buildings were going to take precedent over the church. But now, what you're telling me is they're the same height. Is that correct?
Generally, yes.
Within a hangar, Nate, I mean, they're.
Correct.
They're very close.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted clarity on that.
Yeah, no, no trouble. So, using, you want to go forward, we can jump through the, the pictures of the buildings. Obviously, some of them are on campus, are off. They range in various heights. Sullivan and Austin, for us, are also precedent, because they're the closest buildings on our campus to this location. And so, using those, at this height, we went back and said, you know, the three-story building at 500 feet, if we kept the 500-foot dimension, we'd get 700 beds, which is 100 less than what we wanted out of Royal Crest. But we decided the 500-foot long doesn't make any sense either. So, we've cut back from six stories to five stories. We've cut back from 500 feet to a, can you, I'm sorry, can you scroll back down? I apologize, I got ahead of myself here. We've cut the type of housing to reduce the square feet. We've cut the number of beds well beneath where we started. We've cut the height down, which is what's driving the bed count to be reduced. And we've gotten down to the point where if we start going any lower, we make this project not financially viable. And, and we're already doing it, I didn't get into the premiums that we're paying for this over just doing taller and shorter. But for our standpoint, this was the project we put forward, because we thought it'd make the most sense. I'm sorry, now you can go to the, the next slide, so.
But you will still need Royal Crest for about 300 students.
So, it, the way that, the way that we do the math is, we, we currently lease about 600 beds. We lease units, but we release, we lease about 600 beds. There are individual students or their parents who lease additional units on their own. We are not privy to that number, because those are private transactions between Royal Crest and, and the renter. Everything we used during the process of the Royal Crest review was that there was about 250 to 300 students that live on their own. So, if you calculate from that perspective, yes, you're probably within that range. I can't speak to whether there will be more students who decide to rent on their own, or less. All I can say is, is that our goal has been and continues to be not to be in the master lease market, and not renting ourselves, but to get to a place where the students are contained in our facilities and run by us.
Question, are there students who are renting on their own because they're not offered, like, they're seniors, so they're not offered dorm option?
So, we, yeah, so, I appreciate the question, it's a good one. So, our policy is for every student who wishes housing, we will try to get it. And all we do is go back to Royal Crest and rent. So, a student who's made the decision they want to rent on their own is a student who has decided that they don't want whatever amenities or oversight is provided.
So, even if Merrimack had the room, an abundance of the room, there are people who are still going to rent on their own?
That is most likely, yes. At the end of the day, I think that is true. I think.
College dorm life isn't for everybody.
Yeah, it is, it is not for everybody. We could, we hadn't a lot of time talking about why. I would personally think that that's the case, but I think at the end of the day, there are, there are some students who just, or their parents, who believe that they could rent a two-bedroom apartment and live on their own, or live with only one person per bedroom. And, you know, that's not something that we provide.
How many students does Merrimack College have at this point?
Our undergraduate population is about 3,900 students.
3,900, okay. And how many of them live on campus, not on Royal Crest, but on campus?
Yeah, we have about 2,100 beds on the campus.
Okay.
And then, this will add to that.
Okay. And so, if you had been able to house 1,000 additional students, so that would put you at about 3,100. And so, then, that's relatively close to the, to the full number, and probably the rest is people who want housing elsewhere. So, that leaves still about 500 that you're not accounting for from your previous plans. Is the plan to still have those folks rent from Royal Crest in the medium term?
I, we don't have any policies that, that say that a student at Merrimack can't rent a certain location on their own.
No, no, sure. No, I meant, I meant more that if you're only moving 500 out of the 1,000 that you were planning.
Yeah.
Does that mean that 500, that you still plan to rent 500 units or so in, or 500 beds or so in Royal Crest?
I, I, just to go, go back to the math. So, we're renting about 600 beds ourselves. We are the renter, we sign a lease, and then students are assigned that unit from us. This 540 beds would replace the vast majority of that.
Okay.
It is not our goal to remain at Royal Crest as a leaser.
Gotcha.
I think if I didn't say this at the prior meeting, I'll say it again. In the last two years, the rent has gone up 15% to 18% each year. They're doing that for everybody.
Right.
I don't really find that that's a sustainable model for us, without getting in too much detail, for every dollar that they're increasing, right? The students aren't bearing a full price of that. There's a financial aid model that we're subsidizing.
Right.
And where Royal Crest is a, is in a REIT, right, it's going to follow where the market bears in terms of rent. And if the market is driven by what we rent is roughly 20% of the units, it could be easily argued that we're helping to drive up rent on everybody.
So.
So, we, we would like to get out of that market entirely.
Yeah.
There's always going to be an argument as to whether it's better to have the institution leasing there or a whole bunch of students on their own. The reason we had 1,000 in the Royal Crest project was because the idea was, of the other units that would be developed, none of them would be available to students. So, that was the only location in which to put them.
I, I guess where, where I'm sort of ultimately going with this is, is that if we're cutting, if you're cutting down to 540 beds, do you see yourselves having to build more for more housing in the medium term?
I, I think that answer is yes in the long term. I don't know what long term looks like, but yes in the long term. And I think this was where, this is why I wanted to make this point, is when we, we initially thought about the corner, this was before Royal Crest, we initially thought the corner would be able to bear more students. We thought we would do them over time, a building, and then another building, and then another building. Obviously, the world has changed. We stopped and moved to the, the Royal Crest and tried to do it there. And, and so, we're trying to be as reasonable as we possibly could be on this site. But yes, if I could answer your question from the institution's perspective.
Yeah.
Recognizing the, the conversation we're having about a four-story building, we know we couldn't go higher. That is square feet that we're going to have to replicate somewhere else. And what that looks like, I don't know, in part because this is a project that we're doing with a partner, is a third party. And those are easier to do on the periphery of your campus. It's really difficult to do those interior.
Right.
I have a question about the, can we scroll back up to the proposal from like 2022? That I understand was not like an official.
Yep.
Submission to anyone?
Sure.
Um.
You want to go all the way back to the beginning?
Yeah, it's a good bit up.
Yep. I think it's like the third slide or the fourth slide.
You drive this very well.
There it is.
Up, up.
Just passed it.
Right here.
So, on here, it looks like Building A, so like Building B and C, and Buildings D, E.
Yep.
Are kind of roughly in the footprint of what we were looking at just now.
Yep.
But if you go to End of Building A, is there something else that's built there now that would prevent you from putting a building there? I know it's not, our purview is in Andover.
Yeah, it's, it's currently parking. That was, and this master plan was slated to be an academic building. And it is, I guess, in theory, it's possible that if these were to be built in an attempt to get more beds, we might put that there. I assure you that there's no one who lives in that Rockridge community that is going to think that that's a good idea.
Sure.
And that, that building is significantly closer to the neighborhood than these buildings are to, to the neighborhood.
In the neighborhood in North Andover.
Right, in North Andover. But I don't, I have, and just to be clear, as we've done community meetings, I have stated that the institution has no plan to build housing or anything else there in, in any time soon. So.
Gotcha.
I wouldn't want to be, I wouldn't want to sound duplicitous.
Yeah.
Between all those conversations. So, that, that's my answer.
I'm just thinking that might be a way to offset like the top floor, and like a smaller building that may be the community, even though it's closer to another community, would be.
You mean between third and fourth?
Yeah, so like on the buildings that we're considering now that are four stories, right?
Yeah.
Like, you know, if the equivalent amount of housing were built in a third, smaller building, kind of where A was, would you still be able to get the same footprint?
I, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have the financing.
Yeah.
The, the additional, the additional cost for doing that, right?
Would be way more.
Would be, would be way more. And so, all, I, I don't, I don't mean to say this in a manner that the board isn't well aware of, but it is infinitely cheaper to build on top, right, of floor or floor than it is to add more, more roof and more.
Entirely different building.
Right. And so, so I think that would, the 540 beds makes this all very tight and very difficult. And we've tried to be as responsible as we could be. And I think, as I stated in the meeting, I said it half-jokingly, but I, I meant what I said. We, we have done everything we've tried to do to avoid a situation where a conversation like this would be necessary. We just can't, we can't make that work. And so, this is not just the difference between a floor or the financial difference. It is, it is literally the difference between our ability to get students out of Royal Crest. And, and if we do not, if this is a project that doesn't move forward, it's not a matter of us continuing to master lease at Royal Crest. It is just us simply saying, we're going to get out of that business, and those students will be on their own. And I think, regardless of this board or anyone else, I think we would all agree that that's not probably the right thing. And we end up right back where we started. And I think we're trying to avoid all of that, all at the same time. So, there's a lot of ancillary impacts to all of this, and some of that, I know, is the purview of this board, and some of it is our responsibility.
I've lived in Amherst, Massachusetts, where there is a high demand for housing and not enough campus housing.
Yeah.
I see what happens in those situations.
Yeah.
I have a question. I might have asked this at the last meeting, but I was a little fried by the time you guys on.
Understood.
Why can't you get rid of the academic space and make the, the first floor beds? So that you have, essentially, what you have is the first floor is academic.
Yep.
Three floors is beds.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could you go down? I just need, I'm looking for a floor plate, so keep going down. You could just stop, stop here for a second, because I, just ignore the red for a moment.
Gotcha.
So, the academic space on the 114 building is a little less than half of the entire floor plate. The wing, the larger wing and the floor plate going all the way to the shorter wing is already housing.
Okay.
So, you're not, it's not a floor-to-floor, it's a half a floor. And so, you don't, you don't pick up enough to get there.
I have to tell you, and I know I said this, I said this last month, these, I appreciate when you guys were putting this together. And I understand, obviously, you want to make it look beautiful for your campus, this, obviously. I appreciate the thought that went into it in terms of making the church visible. And the entire thing, when I look at this, I truly look and say it's beautiful. And it really does look beautiful. And once you open up the picture a little bit wider on the focus.
Mm-hmm.
I've driven 114 a bazillion times before you guys came in front of us. And I've probably driven it a couple more bazillion since last month. The height in this spot is so massively overbearing for 114. The height in this spot is so massively overbearing for one fourteen. And I look at Sullivan Hall, which is the one that has a dome on it, right?
Uh, no, that's, that's, uh, Mendel, or Palazzano.
Okay. That building is huge, huge. Basically the same height, and even Sullivan Hall, it's fifty. Both of those are more along where you're at with this height. And because of where they are on the campus, they don't look that big. And I have the same problem with, you know, when I look at two oh three Turnpike and four fifty-one, those are high buildings, those are essentially what you guys are looking at. But not only the architecture of how the building is, but if you look, the part closest to Andover Street is actually less floors because of the elevation and how it goes down. I just, if this was in the middle of Merrimack and we had that, that space, I'd sit here and say, totally reasonable. I completely agree with it. I just, I can't see it here in this spot. And I, I understand where you're at, I just, I can't get over it.
I, and I, I appreciate that, we, it's going back to what I said earlier. If this goes back to the hundred foot, which would, you know, if I could come in here and say, okay, I'm willing to look at this at the height of, of what happens if we're a hundred feet back, but to get back to the five hundred and forty beds, I'm back to a six-story building, and we're talking about a sixty-nine foot tall building, not a fifty-foot building, in which case being a hundred feet back doesn't help, right? Because now we're nineteen to twenty feet taller than any building around it. And in addition to it, in our view, not looking as good, the reality is it's, we're not talking about apples to apples. At that point, we're financially not talking about a project that moves forward. And so, um, I, I respect the fact that, that there are people who have concern about its size and things like that. But this, this is in fact where we all find ourselves, there is just a reality. In order to, um, in order to address a situation that has occurred as a result of Royal Crest, I'm doing the best that we possibly can to resolve that. And, and I understand that that, you know, there are, there are some people who feel that that's too tall for that site. There are some people who don't, um, I.
And there's no possibility of moving this in, into the middle? I mean, I understand you don't want to take up your own open space more in the middle of Merrimack, but.
I can't, I can't, I can't create a third party, I can't create a third-party partnership with land interior to the campus.
So is that basically what you're saying? That if Merrimack wasn't needing a third party, that that spot is a viable option?
I'm saying, well, I, I can't talk in hypothetical. The reality is, is Merrimack College can't develop a project of five hundred beds without a partner, one. Two, to have a partner, it has to be on a site like this. Three, while we're talking about this particular site, the truth is, we've been at this for a number of years trying to resolve this issue. And part of the reason that we are here is because we were trying to help out with a project that we have gone longer, um, without building housing, so.
And you can't turn the buildings.
What would, how does that mean?
And, and, I'm trying to, I'm, my biggest thing on this is this massive wall of building on one fourteen. So I'd sit here and think, if you turn it and actually make the front, the back, I want to be able to stand here and say, yes, I totally agree with this, to the point of, of giving you guys a yes. I just, I can't get it through my lips, not, not with that.
Well, if you turn it and then you make the back the front, then you have all the open space that people are going to be spending time in facing one fourteen and Andover Street. I don't really want to see kids hacky-sacking, I don't care to, I know what I did in the quad.
You're supposed to be driving, Lauren, you're supposed to be driving.
But I mean, I, I've spent time in a college.
No, I understand it, it's because I don't want to see anything like that. Have you driven by one fourteen and, and taken this, and again?
I drive by every single day as well, multiple times a day. My sales territory is, is this town, all the time.
Have you pictured this?
Yeah, absolutely.
And do you not feel like you are, I mean, I honest to God, I get a, a sense of being claustrophobic for a moment.
Four stories is nothing.
Right there on one fourteen.
Wouldn't say it's nothing, but like at the end of the day, that's not the question.
And the fact is, like you said, you're driving by it, you're not living next to it. You're, you're driving by it, you buy it in twelve seconds.
I barely drive by five oh five Sutton, believe you me, it is a thorn in my side, and I don't even drive by it.
You might have some big personality about that one.
It's just, four, four stories is commonly being built, the, in lots of suburban areas. It's, it's demodul, you know, the pedestal three or four stories above it. And you, you're seeing those all over the place, and it's not a great shock and awe going on with that.
But look at North Andover, look at one fourteen, that is not, it's not who we are, it's not what we are. That's not, not along one fourteen.
So I'm gonna, I want to drag this to Jeff. So, um, working from what Alexandria has said as far as the size, okay. What's on, what I have thought about is, um, I think the church is a, a great example of, of a, of a great, it's, it's going to be my example. If the, okay, the buildings are, there's the campus, I'm going to say more traditional in, in terms. And now you have, we have these large buildings, and they're, uh, you know, they're, they're beautiful office buildings, but they, they almost, you know, they remind me like, I moved here from Houston, Texas. Everything was big and glass and, and new. It's not like around here. Have you given any consideration to maybe trying to make it, uh, I'm going to say fit more in with the church?
You mean from an exterior perspective?
Yeah.
So, um, this came up with the planning board, which is unusual for a Dover project, but this was, this was my response there, just to remain consistent. There is obviously a lot of brick as you drive up one fourteen. But on the campus itself, um, there's a significant number of buildings that are not brick. And the reason that institutions don't do that is they're looking for something that's more attractive for the student who's going to ultimately live in there. And that, for our student body, that is more in alignment with this exterior design. We tried not to be as out-of-the-box flashy about that. There are some people who love it, there are some people who dislike it immensely. Um, I've heard from all sides of that. We felt in addition to it just being more costly, we also felt like, um, it would add to the, to the sense that the chair is talking about, that it just becomes more of a, a wall when it's all brick. And so, um, we've played with some colors that may appear more brick than, than the yellow that's, that's listed here. But, um, we did give serious consideration to it. Our direction to the architects was, um, we want it to, to not just be a simple another brick structure that gets lost in the rest of the, um, the brick that's, that's around it. That kind of the direction that we went in. I don't, I don't know if that helps or hurts, but, but if the question was there, we thought about it, yes.
I understand, um, and I just, I understand that, you know, to put the brick up, it, it may not, it's not perhaps economically logical. But when I drive down one fourteen, what I see is your, if those buildings aren't brick, I don't know what they are, but those that are right on across from Royal Crest.
Yeah, yes.
Those appear to be brick buildings, and again, I'm not.
Yep.
That's what I'm talking about, the continuity in terms of the, you know, looking at these, they're more ominous looking, okay? So it's, I thought if they, maybe if they blended in better, they wouldn't be as ominous.
Yeah, I, I, I take your, your point as a, as a good question. I, all I can say is, is that our earlier views of that was, it actually did not, it did not make it look better, it made it look worse.
Okay.
Um, and, and the latest construction we've done has been anything but brick. So we've just tried to stay within that as best as possible.
Too much brick looks just too institutional. They can have something compatible with the brick.
Like try and pass a prison.
Yeah, I, I, I think we got so much brick, you know? Make it, make it something compatible with it, but, but different, has more appeal, I think.
When do you see the school in ten years? How many more students?
Yeah, it's, it, it's a good question. So we have a strategic plan that lays out for the next, I think it's three or four years still to go. And the answer I gave earlier was the undergraduate population, which is one that's living in, in here. Our total population is about fifty-seven hundred, almost fifty-eight hundred. That includes about eleven hundred students that are online. Our goal is to get to about sixty-five hundred. That's predominantly in the master's world and online. So I don't, I don't, I don't see, especially over the next ten years, with the number of high school graduates in this area dropping, and the number of people going to college as undergrads, static or dropping as well, that we're going to grow with any great leaps and bounds. I think for us, this is more about making sure that there's some stability in the housing, where students know where they're going to be living, we know how to manage it, it's part of the campus. And, um, and so to answer your question, I don't, I see growth, I don't necessarily see it at the undergraduate level. I, I think this is, you know, more or less where we're going to be.
So you're not going to need another four hundred beds in ten years?
I, well, you know, it, it's a, that, let me say, say this. We thought we needed a thousand beds for a reason, because we thought there was a thousand students who needed housing. And if there was no alternative closer to the campus to live there, that they would live in the building that we had. That was the Royal Crest assumption, because none of the other units would have been able to house students. They were either assisted living elderly complex, they were deed-restricted affordable housing, or at least reduced housing rate in the rentals that were left. The developer stated a hundred times over that they weren't going to be for students. So, um, so from our perspective, it was, how do you bring everyone together? It's entirely possible, to the chair's immediate reaction, it's entirely possible that Royal Crest stands for ten more years, and the students that are living there, they'll obviously move on, but they're just replaced by other students who are renting there on their own, and there's no need to build any more housing. It's entirely possible that that project, someone else steps in, or they change their mind, or they realize that they need to redevelop. Anyone who's been over there knows that that's housing stock that's coming to the end of its useful life. They repeatedly said that from that podium, then they may decide that they're going to do something different. If they were to show up and say, hey, would you reconsider doing a much smaller project? I think it would make sense to have that conversation, but I can't predict that future. And quite honestly, I don't see Aimco, which is the parent company of Royal Crest, doing much of anything with the property anytime soon after what has occurred within that vote last year. So I, I, at the risk of being so vague that I don't answer the question, I never want to be accused of leading everyone to a conclusion that I think any reasonable mind would say, we can't predict the future that deep, that far out.
But I mean, to an extent, Merrimack does control that. I mean, you either cut off your freshman class at a certain number and.
Sure, I mean, we could also shut down and sell the property to a strip mall.
Well, I'm not saying go to that extreme, but I mean.
But, but in reality, I mean, it, I, I, I appreciate the question, you're right, we do control it. That's why I keep making the point. There was a time years ago where a project could have happened on that corner. It could have happened interior to the campus, where we're building, housing a building, and then a building, and then a building, and we were building as we were growing. The decision, which in part was the college, in part was the developers, in part were people in the town, was if you keep doing that, there's not going to be enough students who are living in a rental unit that you can move into a Royal Crest space that will be large enough to make the entire Royal Crest project financially viable. Ultimately, we didn't need to be over there, we were invited to be there because that is what would make it financially viable. Now, for sixty-eight percent of the population in the town that was a town meeting, that probably falls on deaf ears, and they don't care, and I totally respect and understand that. But in part, we have, we've reached this point because we were following an effort that we all thought, or some group of people felt was something that would benefit the town. And quite honestly, and I've shared this with the planning board, to have rented at the rents that we rent over there, as opposed to having already built something over here and take the revenue for that, has been incredibly costly to the institution. And now making the decision to cut this back into something that gets to four stories, as opposed to arguing for something that's larger, which again, I think we would agree feels, you know, a bit over the top and heavy-handed, gets really difficult. So there, there is no way to escape a certain amount of these realities. It doesn't, doesn't mean I enjoy saying them out loud, but I, but I will always feel compelled to give the fullest story. And if this was just simply Merrimack wanted a decision to, to grow out of hand, and now we've got to do this, and we're, you know, falling on our knees asking for this alone, that's one thing. But in this particular case, um, it's a little bit more complicated than that.
Go for it.
Jeff, you've got like twenty-three acres behind two oh three Turnpike Street?
Yes.
Wait, what?
Totally out of the, well, let him, let him answer, because it's, because this came up, someone came up to our board.
Yeah, yep, yep, so across the street, across Andover Street, behind two oh three, there is, there are twenty-three acres. It is also where our retention basin is, it does have an enormous amount of wetlands. I think the only developable land over there is about twelve or thirteen acres of it. You have to pass over wetlands to get it, and you have to have an easement from two oh three to four oh, four fifty-one to actually get to it. And not to take this too much further, beyond all of those restrictions, it is in Andover. And I don't see a scenario where Andover, the town of Andover, just sits there and says, so let me get this straight. So North Andover didn't want this at Royal Crest, and they don't want it on the corner that you said you would develop if Royal Crest doesn't move forward, so we should welcome it in open arms.
Well, no, I would propose that, you know, North Andover has to choke up a little bit, and Andover has to choke up a little bit.
I am quite confident that if you were to have that conversation, they would feel pretty strongly that they have seen a, a, they have seen more development in the past fifteen years on the Andover side of this campus than North Andover has. But regardless, um, it's not as simple as just being over there, right? There is, there are restrictions that exist over there as well.
Cause my question, have you looked into it at all, is if it is viable at all?
Yeah, I mean, that, that would, that's why I could rattle off so much of it, it, it's not as simple as that. And I, I got that question during Royal Crest. Just get off Royal Crest and go build it, and my response was, if we were going to do that, we would do that starting here first. And, um, and so, yes, I, I readily acknowledge that, um, it is, it would be better if we were not sitting here. And I, I, I think that's what the chair had said last time, like, I, I wish we didn't have to be here to have this conversation. I assure you, I've tried to do everything we possibly can to avoid being in this seat anymore, to put you in the, those seats. But, um, the reality is, is that this was not something that we went off and did on our own. This was something that has been going on for years, and we've attempted to put it at Royal Crest. We've cut this down by forty-six percent, we've cut down the height, we've tried to figure out a way to make it as design-friendly to still be able to see the church. We've tried to maneuver a lot, it is infinitely more expensive today than if we had done this years ago. And, um, in order to do that, we've had, have to have a partner, and in order to do that, we have to have a certain volume, and this is where we find ourselves.
I just, and I understand because we're dealing with Dover, but I, I look at the fact that one fourteen has thirty-five feet for a reason, and I believe it also has, I think, a hundred-foot setback along one fourteen for a reason. And I think in part it's to avoid things like this. And I'm going to end up being a broken record, which I, I don't want to be, because I understand the position you're in, um, and I also understand the position, you know, of where I'm sitting.
Yeah, I, I, I totally understand that.
So let me ask you a question, so I'm probably behind the curve on this one, and I don't know who to do this to. I need a little clarity on Dover. I mean, reasonableness is really squishy.
Well, that's the problem, is for something to be reasonable, it is, and case law has says, it's very case-specific.
Right, so I just need a little clarity, if anybody could provide me any, that would be helpful.
I don't think anybody, honestly, I, and don't take, I don't, I'm not trying to take this away from you.
No, no, I, I.
Nobody can. You have to look at this and say, and it's the same way a judge would look at it if it was in front of a judge. Look at this and say, in your mind, when you look at everything else, is this reasonable? Look at this and say, in your mind, when you look at everything else, is this reasonable? And it's kind of like what he has said. If he came in here with seven stories, even Hay himself is sitting here saying, this spot, this location, that's not reasonable. I sit here at four stories and say, it's just not there for me.
So, it's forever squishy?
It is forever squishy, because I will be a hundred percent honest with you. You could go in front of a judge in Superior Court who says it's reasonable, and then you could go in front of an appeals court of three judges, and two of them could say it's not, and one could say it is. Something like this is, it's very fluid, and that's really the best I can say.
So, is the Dover the purpose of the finding, related to whether we do a finding? If it doesn't, if it's not Dover, we give them a variance? Is that...
Let me try to...
I'll let them throw in on this.
Under Dover, the standard is not hardship that you'd have under variance. The question is reasonableness, and that's why we apply both for a finding, because we think the finding is appropriate. You know, that this project under Dover would be reasonable. The height would be reasonable, given the project. One of the inquiries that, of course, look at is whether compliance would substantially diminish or detract from the usefulness of the structure, or impair the character of the institution's campus. And that's why we've tried to give you, you know, some sort of an alternatives-type analysis as to how we got to this point. Dover is not your typical variance, because typically on a variance, you need a hardship. But Dover, you don't. And it goes back to the question of reasonableness, and it goes back to the reasonableness to the applicant, reasonableness to Merrimack College. And that's why we spent a lot of time on these slides, explaining to you how we got to this building, how we got to this height, and how we got to this location, in order to meet that test.
So, that's why you're looking for the finding, because you're applying the Dover amendment to that?
I think that would also apply for the variance.
We did both, just in case somebody looked at it differently.
Dover, it doesn't apply to the variance, so that's separate.
This is my interpretation, and maybe I'm wrong. The request for the variance would be to say that the inspections office should have applied the reasonableness clause of the Dover amendment, and they didn't.
Yeah.
And the variance is saying, maybe they did fine, but we're asking for you guys to also consider the reasonableness clause.
Yeah, I think even under a variance, the question is reasonableness. I think the finding is appropriate. I tend to apply for both, just in case someone here thinks we ought to look at it differently.
I love the additional paperwork.
And, you know, the Eagle Tribune does very well when we do the advertising, but, you know, if we applied for, you know, just a finding, someone would say you should have applied for variance too. So, you might as well have both before you. But I do believe that what's appropriate is the finding, that under Dover, the height in these buildings is reasonable.
So, I'm confused, I think, by what Laura said. So, under the variance, can we... Are you asking us to grant the variance because of the Dover amendment?
If you decide...
Like, because the variance has, you know, topography, soil condition, that sort of thing?
No, it is not in this case.
No, it doesn't, because it's...
It doesn't in this case.
Right. So, the Dover applies to whether it's a finding or a variance?
No.
Is that what I'm trying to find out?
That's correct. The project is a Dover project. It's been determined by the building inspector that it's a, you know, that it meets the Dover requirements.
Okay. So, you're sort of, so if we're looking for a variance, then we're applying the standards of Dover versus the typical variance requirements?
That's correct. But I believe the appropriate application fee to act under would be the finding, and making the finding under Dover.
I don't think you'd grant a variance without granting a finding. I think you...
Well, no, if you grant a finding, you don't.
I don't think, in this case with the Dover, I don't think you would do a variance. I think it's redundant.
I would go the opposite direction, and I would say that I would be much more towards a variance than a finding. But it seems to me, finding is, again, a finding of fact, whereas a variance is something where we have subjective leeway. And so, for me, a finding is a much higher standard than a variance.
But Dover is just reasonable, right? I mean, it has to be reasonable.
Reasonableness as to things like soil shape and topography, but is still fundamentally a subjective thing, whereas a finding, Dover or not, a finding is, to me, a much higher standard, is to imply that the building inspector did not evaluate the property correctly.
So, the Dover is reasonable on height, set Dax, building size?
Like, for example, I don't think it is reasonable to say that our building inspector measured the height of the building wrong, right? That, for me, is what the finding is asking for. If there's a compelling argument that we have mismeasured the height of the building based on, you know, what point of the prop, what point of the land, what the slope of the gradient is, and those kind of things, then that would go into a finding. To me, a variance is, you know, okay, the building inspector measured the height of the building correctly. It's not, doesn't line up to it. They're asking for a bit of extra leeway, and we still apply a reasonableness standard to that.
But, so, for the finding, with the Dover amendment, it's not a question of fact that he measured the height of the building wrong. It's a question of reasonableness. Should it be allowed to be that extra height?
Is that actually the case?
Right.
So, then, okay, so then, so there's no difference then between the request for a variance and the request for a finding?
I deny it on the variance, not on the finding.
Yeah, so he denies it, he denies it because it's supposed to be thirty-five. And it's not. Done deal. End of story. Do not pass go. Do not collect two hundred. There's no more analysis to it.
He could have passed it through reasonable if he thought that was reasonable, but he didn't want to do that. He wanted to give us the ability to say that it's reasonable or not reasonable.
So, but I just wanna make sure I understand what that...
Paul, you wanna throw in on this?
Is that correct?
Kind of. It's, the height is thirty-five feet. So, all of a sudden, he dove thirty-five feet, so now we need a variance. The Dover allows us to give him that reasonable variance. So, it's given us the pathway to say, yes, it's the pathway, is that reasonable or not? It's not saying we can't give him one. That's not the decision here. Is fifty feet, forty-eight feet, forty-seven feet reasonable? Is fifty feet setback reasonable? It's a...
So, the reason...
It's suggestive to all of us, is what is reasonable.
Sure. But I guess the reason that this is important to me is that a finding has a three-vote requirement, and a variance has a four-vote requirement.
That's up to you guys.
And so, if there's no difference, well, but if there's no difference in the standard by which we should evaluate a finding versus a variance in this case, then the finding is simply a three-vote version of the same thing.
Let me ask you. The height is thirty-five feet in this area, right?
Yeah.
Okay. They're telling us, we don't have to measure or guess, they're telling us their building is higher than thirty-five feet.
Yeah.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Then essentially, you would agree with Paul.
Right. So, that's what I thought this was, and now I'm being told that they were applying a reasonableness standard to even that.
Well, I think when you're looking at the process...
It is. Under Dover, the standard is reasonableness. And it's a little confusing, but Dover, you know, does provide, in the case law under Dover, that it's not a hardship. It's reasonableness, and it's typically done as a finding. That the project before you, at this height, is reasonable under Dover.
But if the result would be a finding, but you're referencing the verbiage of a hardship, which is in a variance, so I think that's maybe where we're getting a little hung up on this, is like, you know...
A hardship wouldn't normally be part of a finding for me anyways.
Right. Exactly.
And under Dover, if you're gonna look at it as a variance, then you have to look at not a hardship standard under a variance, but reasonableness under Dover. And that's why I think the finding is more appropriate than a variance.
But to me, a finding, requesting a finding, says that the permitting process should have considered the reasonableness standards of Dover, and they did not, and that we are disagreeing with that decision. And a variance is saying, no, they were supposed to give us the zoning, and we will grant a variance, not based on the typical variance criteria, but on the reasonableness standard of Dover. Am I wrong?
That's not how we look at Dover, and that's not how we look at the finding.
Okay.
I think Paul, from what I heard, well, he can speak for himself. I think you wanted us to be the ones to decide reasonableness.
Well, you guys are the ones who are issuing variances. I can't issue a variance.
But the question is, do we do that with a finding or a variance? And the vote count would be different for both. And so, if we can do that either with a finding or a variance, then what's the difference?
Why not do a finding, right?
Right.
It seems, from the applicant's perspective, that, yeah, we should not even worry about the variance and just do the finding.
Yeah. What if the finding doesn't?
Well, but to me, there's no difference in what you were asking them. So, if you wouldn't say yes to the finding, you wouldn't say yes to the variance. I get what you're trying to say, and I thought that that was what it would be. But it sounds like, from Paul and from the applicant, that that is not the case.
So, I think either way, whether it's a variance or a finding, it's still reasonableness. If you think it's reasonable, whether you find it or you variance it, it's your opinion if it's...
But one more person would have to agree for it to be a variance.
I'm saying, but I think you're right. It's not gonna change your mind.
If you vote for one, you'd vote for it on the other.
You're gonna vote for one, you're gonna vote for the other.
Okay. So, this is what I'm gonna do, 'cause it's obvious. Everybody's all over the board. Counselor. Right, ten fifteen.
We can agree on that.
What's that?
We agreed on that.
Okay, good. We agreed on something tonight. It's impressive. It happens sometimes. Okay. So, this is what I'm seeing. We have a board, because this is the first time this board is dealing with Dover. There is confusion. I see a few options. We can either sit here until I don't know what time, and have the board continue to try to figure out how we interpret Dover under a finding and Dover under a variance, and all of us non-educated people get to throw all of that information out. You can try to better explain so that the board collectively gets what we're doing. We can continue and allow you an opportunity to try to better explain, possibly give examples that aren't necessarily exactly yours, but you get my point, some examples to help guide the board a little bit more in understanding what they're doing in terms of what we're saying when we vote for a finding, when we overturn a finding, or granting a variance.
Can I make one other suggestion, because it might help me try to understand which way to go? Can the board give a sense of where the members feel on the finding and variance? And I'm asking that because if, regardless of whether or not it's three or four, the board is in favor of the finding or the variance, then it makes it easier to try to understand or try to explain where we're at. Because as a practical matter, maybe it's not gonna make a difference.
Okay. So, I can tell you, based off of the information I've had in front of me and where I'm at, when it comes to findings, I just have this, and I could be very wrong. It's almost this ingrained that, for me, to overturn a finding is essentially saying that our building inspector is wrong. That never sits well with me. I think he does his job. I think he does his job very well. And I think there's other avenues to address that kind of issue. And in this case, I do not see that he did his job wrong. So, that's where I stand on the finding. As for the variance, and I probably made it very clear, I'm probably one of the ones, I just can't see this as being, looking under Dover as well as I can, this being reasonable for this spot at this height.
I'm gonna go around. On finding, I don't know what to say. I don't know what standard to hold that to. And so, I have to defer a little bit on giving you an answer there. I think if it is a standard of viewing the building inspector as having gotten it wrong, I probably would side with our chair on that. But on a variance, I have no trouble with this. I comment it from a very different point of view, I think, than our chair does. I don't think the height is a problem. I don't think the distance is a problem. This is a large road. This is a place that people drive by, not a place that as many people are living right up next to it. And so, like, I think this is a reasonable application of the constraints that you have. I'm sure I would love it if it was smaller, if the roof was angled. But given what you have to work with, this seems like a reasonable approach and solution. And so, I would be fine with a variance for this.
So, I will agree with everything you said, especially the part about I hate overruling our building inspector. And I mean that in all seriousness. However, if a finding requires three votes to pass, and a variance requires four, I'm all for the finding, which would seem to indicate that I think this is okay.
I'm good with it either way. I think it's reasonable if you... If you have a three-story building and you need it to be a little bit taller, you can't just make it five feet taller. You have to go a whole nother floor. So, we're adding one more floor. I think that's reasonable. You know? And like I mentioned before, you drive by this site. You're not living there. And four-story buildings are not scary or daunting. They're everywhere in suburbia, so I'm good with it either way.
I think Merrimack is unique in that you're probably in the minority as far as the growth that you're achieving in today's environment. Is that correct, Jack?
Correct.
So, I think that, and I see your dilemma in light of Royal Crest and the towns vote on that, I mean, how that ended. And so, I think that you are, I'll call it, you can be an engine for the town of North Andover. I think we need to find a way to help you.
So, maybe we just wrap it up tonight?
Well, my concern is, I'm not comfortable... Well, I'm not comfortable, hold on. We've had board members state that they are not a hundred percent sure on the understanding of a finding. I am not comfortable allowing board members, sorry, board members, to take a vote on something that they have openly stated they don't fully understand. So, that aspect is not going to fly. I can't...
No, I'm with you on that.
But what about...
She was asking if we wanted to talk, and I said, we're not voting members.
Because at the next meeting, they might be voting me. You don't know who might be missing.
Well, this is where we are tonight, so...
Try to make it so you don't get to see me next month.
Oh, but we've become so close.
I know. And I've been spending every month here, except the one month you took off and didn't have to be. I think we'd move forward with the variance, based upon the four votes and the variance.
Okay.
And we would, I think ultimately, withdraw the finding without prejudice and move forward on a, assuming we have the four votes on the variance.
Well, all you did was ask where people stand. Understand, just understand. Once we close...
There's no going back.
There's no going back. So, I guess I sit here and say, if I convince a board member to change their mind...
Well, we haven't even gotten a public comment yet, so...
We have not gotten a public comment yet.
So, all of a sudden, why don't you do the public comment? And, you know, in the past, we've continued a finding.
Well, my thing is, is that at ten thirty, twenty twenty-five, I have one more application.
And that's why I'm trying to give a way of getting through this tonight as well. And, you know, one way to, I guess you should ask for public comment and all the board members that want to talk, or to be able to talk.
Okay.
And then I have a suggestion, which we used a number of months ago, you know, which would be for us to continue, to have you take a vote initially on the variance, and assuming the variance passes, we continue the finding, you know, for the next meeting, with the idea of withdrawing that without prejudice. But you probably, obviously, you need to get any public comment as well, and any other board members who want to talk.
Okay. Okay. Do the board members currently have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. So, before giving it to people who are here, did you receive the email from John Simmons? It was sent. Jen, did that get passed on?
It's been sent, Simon.
No, pardon, not sent back to you.
Okay. I will give you my copy so that you can review it well. I guess I'm going to be reading it out loud. It makes a good point. Forget trying to get out of here. Okay. Dear zoning board, the purpose of this note is to respectfully express my opposition to the variance petition of Merrimack College regarding the waiving the height restrictions for their proposed dormitories. I'm speaking only as an individual and not as a member of or in behalf of the North Andover Planning Board. I would like to visit the, to list a criteria for granting a variance, all of which must be met, and then explain my reasons for opposing the variance. Section 10, the permit granting authority shall have the power, after public hearing, for which notice has been given by publication and posting as provided in section 11, and by mailing to all parties in interest, to grant upon appeal or upon petition with respect to particular land or structures, a variance from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance or bylaw, where such permit granting authority specifically finds that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such lands or structures but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinances or bylaws would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degrading from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw. This petition fails to meet these criteria in my judgment for the following reasons. The variance request is not related to soil conditions, slope, or topography, but rather to height only. The applicant explicitly stated at the planning board that increasing the height to get more density was the sole reason for the request, and that the condition of the site were not a factor. The applicant mentioned that there were other buildings in the area that were taller than the proposed dormitories, but this is seriously misleading. The building in adjacent B4 Zone are located in a bowl. The street level is approximately eight to 10 feet higher than the base of the buildings. This significantly mitigates the impact of the height as the buildings appear much smaller at street level. Also, the property slopes down, and all of the facades that are over 35 feet are set in the back, completely away from any public view. Finally, all of the buildings are set much further back from the street, at least 60 feet, than the proposed dormitories. Several campus buildings are taller than 35 feet, but all of them are much farther set back from 114 and Andover, at least 100 feet compared to the 30 feet of the planned dorms. The size and scale of this project greatly exceeds any other structures in the R3 Zone and greatly changes the character of the existing neighborhood in the following ways. The buildings are extremely long, with the one on 114 in excess of 300 feet. As noted above, the buildings are set 30 feet from the property line, a far smaller setback than any other commercial building on 114. Interestingly enough, there's a standard provision in the zoning bylaw that requires setbacks along 114 to be 100 feet. While technically Merrimack does not have to comply with this provision, given the Dover amendment waivers, this demonstrates that the proposal is way out of line with our standard zoning requirements. The building itself is very high, and that excludes utilities. The buildings also have flat roofs, which exacerbate the density. The applicant has clear alternatives to this proposal, including reducing the height to three stories to be compliant, moving the buildings off 114 by extending into Andover portion of the Merrimack lane, or submitting a zoning change to the town meeting. If the applicant is unwilling to make the project zoning compliant, then I believe the best alternative for them is to bring a zoning change to town meeting so that the citizens of North Andover will have a say in a project that has significant impact on the community. Thank you for your consideration. John Simmons, 25 Ironwood Road. I will get you a copy of this.
Okay, and I can quickly respond to the email. I think there's, and I respect for John, but I think he does not understand Dover and doesn't understand that Dover is not your typical, even under a variance, Dover is not a hardship. It's a reasonableness test, and therefore, you don't have the typical variance requirements. And I think it's pretty clear under Dover and Dover case law that that's, that's what we're dealing with in terms of reasonableness.
I did also want to clarify something, because it's come up a couple of times, about 100-foot setback along 114. But even on the application, given, the minimum front setback is set at 30 feet for this area.
Do you have your, I don't have my book with me.
I think it's neighboring zones, so...
Right, but I'm just saying, like, you know, this project is not, as far as I know, beholden to the 100-foot setback rule.
Well, we can only look at height. So it's just, it's not a significance in the sense of...
It's just come up a couple of times, that like, 100-foot setback along 114 is the standard. But in this case, it's not. It's nothing to do with this, right?
Almost nothing has anything to do with this, because it's Dover.
What, Jeff, this is, you were showing is that the setbacks actually going to increase with this...
With the 114 project.
Well, it's not the setbacks, the distance from the curb.
The property line is the same.
Right.
Right.
The setbacks from the property line, not to the road.
Correct.
But the distance to the road will increase. So the visual appearance will be a little bit further back.
Once that actually happens.
Once that happens.
Which, it's the state, so, yeah. Grain of salt, grain of salt. Okay. Is there any public comment on Merrimack Street? From anybody?
Merrimack College.
I'm sorry, Merrimack College.
You haven't moved us someplace.
I mean, you know, I had the two. Nothing. Okay. Is there anything from the board?
Nothing from the neighbors across the street.
I don't believe, do you want to just check your email real quick?
I'm from Andover now.
What's that?
Yeah, I'm from Andover, and I got the second notice, not the first.
Is there a reason he would get second notice for North Andover?
So the...
I'm a little naive on this part.
Yeah, no, 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 it's so, so due to the proximity of this location, there were folks from Andover that were noticed. The list that we received for those addresses was certified from Andover. After we sent out the initial list, Andover realized, we realized that there was an error, and Andover acknowledged that the list that we got was not complete. So we re-noticed a second time.
Okay, but how do I deal with Andover residents?
They can talk.
Okay, that's, that's what, that's what I needed to know. This is a first. So, thank you. You're more than welcome to...
Yeah, I, all I can say is...
I just need you to come to the podium, sorry.
Steve McGrath, Brookfield Road, Andover. When the buildings do go in, the first thing that comes before anything else are the dump trucks of dirt. They build the land up like crazy. I'm, I was in their construction zone. How many years, guys? Six, seven? Seven. My kid grew up to the sounds of OSHA beeping. So whenever these guys are up to something, I'm always, you know, vigilant about it as I can be. But, so, I know I have no bearing, but, you know, when you think of the people for your town, just know that, you know, they say what the land is now, the land is going to go up. It'll be higher than we think.
Okay.
And I say that with the Scott hand of someone who lives near it. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Do I have anything else? Anybody else? Nothing. Okay.
I move that we...
Hold on, hold on. You love jumping to the...
I love, I do.
I know. Counselor, what would you like to do?
I ask you to take a vote on the variance first, and the, if the variance passes, then we can continue the finding.
Okay, so are we continuing the finding until next month, regardless of the variance vote?
I guess I'd be more comfortable continuing until next month.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying. We're going to, when I say continue, I mean, are we going to be voting on variance? And if you don't get what you want, we're going to just stick around and vote on the finding, or?
We're going to continue that to next month.
Are we continuing to next month?
That's a great, that's a great question.
Regardless of where the variance goes. I know you guys think you know where it's going.
Yeah, no, no, it's actually, it's a very fair question. Could you just give me one second?
Of course, of course.
Because the finding is the thing that there's unclarity on, right?
I need more coffee.
Where we want to reference our clients here.
So our, our preference is, is that we be given the opportunity to respond to the question that the chair has, if a finding is necessary, so that we can explain that. So we would like to continue the finding to the next meeting.
Okay, so finding is continued to next month, regardless of variance outcome?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure I got that right. Trying to set anticipation, because I know there are people here going, "Are we voting so that we can get up here?"
And what we ultimately do on the finding next month depends on the variance.
Well, I, I'll stick with the simple. Regardless of the vote today, we'll be, we'll be back to deal with the finding.
Finding next month.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Someone now make...
I move that we continue the finding for, for Merrimack College to next month.
Okay. Is it your second?
Sure.
Okay, I have a second. Ron?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous to continue the finding for Merrimack College until next month?
December 12.
December 12.
Yep.
I've got it on my calendar.
Okay. Okay. We're, can I have a motion to...
I move for closed public comment.
I second.
Okay. Vote, Ron? Oh, you, yeah, okay. I'm a no. Yes.
Aye.
Steve, okay. So we've closed public comment for the variance for Merrimack College. You got it right this time. Okay, guys. I am apparently the lone wolf. I am shocked and surprised. How am I the only one that finds this to be an absolute... Have you driven by 505?
Yes.
Do you want to go drive by it right now?
You know, I don't mind it. I haven't even noticed it. And so I'm going to drive by this, and I'm going to say, "Hey, you know, if it was only 35 feet, I'd feel much better." I won't even notice 12 feet.
And I, and I will be clear on 505. If we're going to relitigate 505, it was the right decision to not have the tall building by the residents, right? That it was better to have it by the street, where people drive by it, not where people live.
The building's not even up, and I curse it.
You see, I just don't feel that way.
You know, I used to have this issue with, with...
But here's my thing. How do any of you find it to be reasonable, when you look at the rest of the neighborhood? Look throughout, all along 114.
Yeah, we got a dollar store.
I'll take the dollar store over 47 feet!
Really?
Yeah!
You'll take a dollar store that was built in, like, the 90s, over 47 feet, that, like, is intentional?
All right, listen, it was, it was a rioting.
Okay, you're right.
I know, disrespect to the dollar store, but I cringe at that.
Yeah, we're being really harsh on the dollar store.
How do you cringe at the dollar store? The dollar store!
You know what this boils down to? This is, okay, so as a kid, my mother would drag me to these, like, museums and things like that. She'd walk, and she'd say, "That's beautiful." "That's not." I said, "That's arbitrary." Okay? What it boils down to is personal taste. And I see this with Ellen all the time. Should the garage be this way, or should it be this way? It depends what you like. So it's arbitrary. This is not going to bother me driving down 114. It's just not.
How often do you drive down 114?
I drive down 114 all the time.
All the time. We all live in town. But also, like, more to the...
Okay, listen, there are people that don't drive 114.
Fair, but also, more to the point, if we deny this, I mean...
It's not our problem.
Well, it will be. It will be. It will be, because if they don't have campus housing, students will find a way. I have lived in multiple places...
No, 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 no.
No, 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 hold on, let me finish. I've lived in multiple places, in Worcester, in Boston, in Amherst, in many, many suburban areas, where there is not enough on-campus housing, and a lot of students who want it, those houses that are right along 114, across the, on the corner there, as soon as someone doesn't want to live there, it'll be rentals.
Oh, don't worry, Merrimack will buy them at some point.
It'll be rentals to students. And you'll have, like, even more craziness off-campus that's not regulated by Merrimack. Like, it, people are infinitely more behaved in a dorm on campus than in off-campus rental housing.
Okay.
It just is the truth.
Hold on, hold on. You don't get it, though. Merrimack has only so much land. And if their argument is the fact that at this point, they're needing to bring in a third person to help finance, then the chance of getting anything built interior on Merrimack is slim to none.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. The other land they're claiming is wetland, okay? And then they have other land on the other side that the park wants, that apparently is wetland.
Yeah.
Merrimack is going to keep expanding and getting more students, because that's what they want.
Because that's the financial plan for the institution.
But you're going to be dealing with this exact same situation five years down, whether or not you allow this hideous thing with the, okay, it's beautiful, but...
So there'll be 540 more people to have to deal with if this is not the thing.
I'm trying to think of any argument you can make.
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
So...
Goodbye, Jen. Well, Paul's going to take over, so we just need to be kind. I just, it's not something that is reasonable on that spot. It's not. Look at 114.
Okay, so...
Look at 114. Show me a building. Show me a building that close to 114.
And, Senator, it doesn't, that doesn't matter to me. Okay? So you can, you can tell me all you want, that you think this is going to be compellingly ugly.
So we would rather have a construction zone in conservation land, as long as it's not along 114 in North Andover?
Oh, but see, why not?
Because conservation land is important for all of us. Our, oh, a little bit of height next to 114 is not a health risk.
Listen, I know a guy that built a building on conservation. He did arches. It's beautiful. It's north reading. It's possible.
Yeah, not as important as conservation.
But, you know, as far as where does this four-story building go?
In the middle.
It's reasonable there, on 114. It's a busy area, it's a commercial area. The old center is not a reasonable center.
You know what, you know what I see, you know what I picture? I picture this. I picture these, these, these kids who are going to book it all over left and right, more at the big intersection. There you go. And then we can just have more accidents there.
Well, we get all the kids, we got the crosswalk already where everyone crosses. There'll be less of that anyways. It'll free, it'll free, it'll free up some housing for other residents of town to rent a apartment.
I'm not going to win.
Can I posit that it is 10:40?
Yes, I'm aware. I'm not going to win. I get it.
I'd like to hear a motion.
What?
I'd like to hear a motion.
You want to hear a motion?
Yeah. Unless Steve wants to say something, he's good and quiet.
I make a motion, then we vote.
Thank you, Steve.
Eric Frank.
Let's see. What documents do we want to reference? Just like this package?
All right, so...
But it's, this has a lot of marketing stuff in here versus just plans.
All right, so you need, we're not doing the finding. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. That's amendment...
There's a lot of plans in here.
Okay, so you're going to do the addendum to petition for variance packet.
Where's this?
Right here.
Oh, the whole packet.
Yeah, but make sure you have the one that's for variance and not for finding.
I would never, ever.
I hate losing.
I wouldn't do it. Sorry.
Just wait. It's unreasonable. It's going to come back and say hello to you come Christmas and Hanukkah.
Okay, this?
So, addendum to petition for variance.
Yeah.
The...
Addendum to petition for variance.
Okay, sweetheart.
Okay.
So that was just a step, because that's a variance packet. The corner of development project packet, dated November 14. And the corner of development project...
Both of them.
Yes, but be mindful of dates.
Yeah.
I'm a lone wolf. Am I lonesome?
All right. We move to grant a variance for 315 Turnpike Street map, 25.0, parcel 13, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R3 zoning district pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.4, building height, attachment 3, table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for building height in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of allowing the construction of two buildings to be used as academic space and residential dormitories on undeveloped portion of the property. Specifically, applicants have requested a building height for building number one, needing a relief variance of 12.1 feet in height. Building height proposed is 47.1. Building height required per table 2 is 35 feet. The applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-7.4, building height, attachment 3, table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for building height in the R3 zoning district for the purpose of allowing the construction of two buildings to be used as academic space and residential dormitories on an undeveloped portion of the property. Specifically, applicants have requested a building height for building number two, needing a relief variance of 11.9 feet in height. Building height proposed is 46.9. is 46.9 feet. Building height required per table 2 is 35 feet. And, uh...
Reference.
Reference material to be included would be the addendum to petition for variance.
Packet.
Packet. Uh, I don't see a date.
I don't think it's dated.
Undated.
It was from last month's meeting.
It was from... It was with the application, yes.
Yeah, submitted with the application. The corner development project at Merrimack College package dated October 10th, 2023. And the corner development project at Merrimack College packet dated November 14th, 2023.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Give it to Steve.
Okay, Steve. I'll be the first to vote with a no.
I will vote yes.
Ron, Michael?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, time waiver for the finding.
She didn't give me that.
I'll send it over.
Oh, by time she has to have it? Um, December 1st.
No, the time waiver.
I'll send it over.
Because we continued that.
Yeah. See, she has to have that. Like I said, she has to have it applied. So she'll do it tomorrow.
Okay.
She'll grab that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
I truly hope I do not see you next month. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, we have... Oh, look at that, Merrimack College. Everybody, go on. Empty room now. Well, did you just say you had to go to class?
Yes.
It's 11:00.
Where's the next applicant?
Zoning.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, like six hours before, you know.
Okay, up next is the new public hearing for 492 Sutton Street. Good evening, Attorney Vaughn.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes. Attorney Vaughn knows how these things go. Probably wouldn't have coordinated with these two cases. Do you need the legal notice?
Yeah, I have it. Sir, I just...
I have it here.
I have it. Wait a minute. It's not right here. Yeah. Okay, ready?
Yeah.
Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 at 7:30 p.m. to all parties interested in the petition of Homegrown Lacrosse LLC for property at 492 Sutton Street, map 75, parcel 0001-0000 B, also identified as 034 point A dash 0035 dash 0001 point B, North Andover, Mass. 01845 in the I-2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws section 195 dash 4.14 point I, excuse me, recreational uses to allow for a recreational use in the I-2 zoning district for the purpose of constructing and operating a 39,000 square foot plus or minus indoor athletic facility, approximately 2,000 square feet to be office, bathroom, and storage spaces, 37,000 square feet to be open sports field area. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8 a.m. to 4 p.m., Tuesday from the hours of 8 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and Friday from the hours of 8 a.m. till 11:30 a.m. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire, Chair.
Good evening, Attorney Vaughn.
Thank you very much. Brian Vaughn from Small Island Vaughn. On behalf of the applicant, Homegrown Lacrosse. With me tonight is Morgan Seal from Hancock. Our goal and objective tonight is to make Morgan not speak at all. Seriously though, I think this is... There's a lot of materials in front of you, but this is... should be a pretty simple matter. We're here just for a use variance in the I-2 industrial district. A recreational use is allowed, but it's allowed with a special permit. So all... The only relief we need on this matter is the special permit for the use. I know I provided you with a bunch of different plans and things. We happen to have them. We recognize that it's a considerably large building and that you might be interested to see exactly what it is that they were planning to put there. So we included it because we have them for the planning board. While the only relief we need from the zoning board is for the use, we do need a special permit from the planning board and a watershed special permit. So it's site plan permit and watershed special permit. Just to give you the background, the applicant is Homegrown Lacrosse. I'm sure you're familiar with their current facility over near the high school. It's an indoor lacrosse and soccer training center. So it's right when you're pulling into the high school...
DPW?
Yes, exactly. So he's been in town for years and he has a successful business. There's limited parking there. The proposal is to move to a new building that he plans to put up at the entrance to the airport. So when you pull into Terminal Road across from the Sutton Street...
505?
Yeah.
Should have brought that up.
But very far setback from Sutton Street and not nearly as tall. So when you pull in on Terminal Road...
So is it essentially up behind the buildings?
It's between Clark, Old Clark, Terminal, and Sutton. So if you were...
Right next to Independent Tire.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
You ever go to Dominix?
I have. Well, and it's just funny because I'm sitting here. I'm like, wow, really? Can you fit something like that? Okay.
Yeah, it's a big space.
Okay, so he's getting rid of the location he's at now to go here?
Correct.
Got it.
And the other thing that I should mention is that it's obviously... It's owned by the Lawrence Airport. The proposal would be leased land with a building that Homegrown would construct, so...
And since you're leasing it from the airport, I assume they've determined that a building that height wouldn't interfere with the tower that's like right there?
Yes, yeah, no. You are correct. We will, however, need an FAA permit. There is an application for that, but it's not in a flight pattern, so it should be okay.
I'm surprised. I didn't think you could fit a building this big there.
So I stopped by. I drove in there to look at the property and I guess I think it's wonderful that instead of seeing the kids on their iPhones, I think I'm encouraged. So I didn't realize that property that was back there and I think it's a great utilization of it.
I haven't looked enough, but how much parking do you have here? Because I recall when my kids went to the other facility, there was...
Yeah, definitely more than at the other location. And so there'll be a dedicated, I believe it's a 44 space lot, which includes a couple of handicap spaces. And it's kind of backed into so that total occupancy will be limited so that the parking is adequate to handle the number of occupants in the building.
How many kids are on a standard lacrosse team?
Kind of like football, isn't it? Eleven on each side or something like that?
Yeah.
I know, very little. So if there's like two teams playing each other, it's like 20 kids?
Thereabouts and...
Each one would have probably someone driving them and then maybe some friends?
There's a bench.
We think 44 would be enough?
So...
Yeah, I think...
The parking is one per three people allowed occupancy.
Gotcha.
So that's how we kind of reversed it. We figured out what they have for parking and that's what they're going to have for occupancy.
Okay.
Usually vice versa. You go by the building size. We say, "Hey, you need 100 spots." Well, we had to do it backwards because of the size of this.
Gotcha. So if there were like a really popular event and more cars, is there a risk of people parking over by Dominix and taking up their spots?
I think based on what Paul's saying is there isn't really a risk of a more...
It's impossible.
...popular event because they won't be able to do it based on occupancy.
It's a max occupancy.
Because then you get the fire department.
Sure, but like, I mean, like, we don't... You don't have to take three people in a car.
It would still be extra cars because you said it's one space per three occupants, right?
Right, but what we do...
So there's a chance that they all drive individually and then you have three times as many.
But what we do know is empirical data based on Brian's current operation. And there's a lot of carpooling, parents driving other kids. There's a lot of drop-off and pickup. So he's more than comfortable based on how his operations work now that it's more than enough parking for him.
Yeah, most of it I found was drop-off and pickup. Most of them don't stick around.
Parents got free stuff.
Because it's also... What's probably important to note too is that the business isn't just... It's not games per se. A lot of it is just training, so...
It'd be drop-off mostly.
You don't stick around with practice.
I will say I went by there today and granted, I pulled into Old Clark first and then had to pull out and then pull back into Terminal Road. And it was very hard to pull off Old Clark at least without... Because people come around taking that right onto Sutton from Osgood like very fast. Is there any concern about the traffic in that area? I almost got T-boned by someone coming out from 505, your favorite place.
I think that's an...
It wasn't because of the size of the building. It was the crazy driver.
That's probably an astute acknowledgement. And what I can say is that the original design had the entrance coming off of Old Clark and that did not make it through TRC in Technical Review Committee. They suggested that wouldn't be good. The other thing I can let you know is that that's part of site plan review is they're looking at it. And we have had a full traffic study done, which is currently being reviewed by the planning board.
Basically...
So it's getting plenty of review. So all you want us to do is say the use is okay.
He said 25% bigger?
Yeah, I think so, 25%.
So I'm just curious about the lease. So you must have a very long-term lease if you're going to make a $5 million investment on 39,000 square foot building.
I would say that it's actually shorter than you would expect. First off, we technically don't have a lease yet. We've been... We have an RFP and it's subject to obtaining the permitting. Then we'll get a final lease. And the airport, I believe... I believe it's only a 30-year term that they generally allow for their leases, so...
Just enough time to pay off the mortgage.
So here's the interesting thing. So Amazon on a billion-dollar building by the time that's done has a 20-yellies.
Amazon has money. They have a lot of money.
What?
They're not taking out a mortgage on that.
But they don't own the building.
They did a lease from them?
Yeah, they don't own the building. Hillwood owns the building. That's what...
They leased it from...
It's the same idea. Is that...
Sure.
Who owns it?
Hillwood.
Oh, okay, but I... Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, hold on. Let's get them out of here.
That's the Ross... Ross Perot. That's his company.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I thought you...
All right, stay focused, guys. We're all moving. Guys, guys, it's late. It's late. Okay, do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Sure.
If we are going to end up voting on this, I've got three packets here. Should they all be included?
I would actually request that we don't include the references to the plans specifically for one.
Because they're conceptual, is what I thought, but...
Well, also, we're only asking for the relief for the...
Architectural.
For the use, right? And...
Oh.
And the building is actually going to comply entirely with zoning. And Paul's the one who's going to be making the determination so that...
You guys have already gone before the planning board.
And we're still in front of them, yes.
So you don't even want the site plan referenced?
Wait a minute.
They asked you to reverse the building?
So that's currently being considered. We don't think that... Yeah.
So in other words, you don't want to create a situation where we've approved the use and you've made some relatively small modifications, but then have to come back to us because the site plan...
Right, or even, you know... So one of the issues which we didn't want to get too deep into is how they're addressing the stormwater and it's on one particular side. And one of the issues the planning board asked us to look at is, well, gee, can we maybe shift the building, put the stormwater on the other side? So there could well be changes based upon the planning board process. And because the only relief we need from this board is just the use, I'd prefer...
Isn't it construction in use?
Well, it's...
For the purpose of constructing and operating.
And the only reason is because Paul won't issue the building permit to construct it unless we have the...
If you don't have the special permit.
Special permit.
Yeah.
It could only be built by special permit.
So I know if you're getting a variant, if you ask for a variance and you reference site plans, any change would require a return. Is that the same with a special permit request?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, any... Okay, what is it you don't want us to include? All of the packets?
No, you know, I wouldn't...
Because listen, I'm not going to hold you...
Yeah.
I'm not going to hold the applicant to this stuff, to the rendering. I have no problem ditching that.
But then this may change the plan.
The permit site plan you said you're dealing in planning with.
Yes, yes. We're in front of the planning board presently. We had one meeting. We have another meeting next week and...
So then this isn't set in stone yet?
Correct.
Which essentially would make this packet not set in stone yet either.
Correct.
So basically no packets.
I would prefer not.
But the building size isn't going to change. The building size isn't going to change. It just...
Okay.
The location's going to change. The parking lot could be in front or the building could be...
And if...
Because of stormwater and because of the location of... What's the other one?
The watershed special permit.
Watershed, yeah, the watershed. So I would put the building out of the watershed that way.
Is it a requirement to cite?
No.
So...
It just holds them to it. Well, because it's...
But when you're saying for use, you're describing the use by text.
Above wind.
No, because... Except for it's for construction and use.
I mean, the question is, is that if this had a building, a different building design, and you can imagine any building design that is remotely feasible, would it change anybody's opinion about whether or not to grant a variance? And if the answer is yes...
I don't know, but 46 feet, I might have an issue.
Well, I'm thinking that open. I'm saying that if there's something that you would find objectionable, then that is where it becomes a problem.
It would, except that we know there's another board in town that's looking at it also, I think.
So they still have to go through a site plan review, right?
Yeah, or, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem if you said something to the effect of substantially consistent with its design as shown or something. I just don't want the...
I mean, at the end of the day, I would, I guess, put my trust in planning that they're going to make things... Sure, things are up on the up and up. So I wouldn't even think to add the condition, you know, so long as it approved, you know, follows the site plan review that you get from planning because you're going to have to do that anyway. You also come in front of our board enough times. So if there's a really big issue, you'll end up hearing about it from me.
And planning is usually pretty good about throwing it to other boards if there comes up a new issue that like, you know, would... If there's a setback issue all of a sudden, I'm sure they would be like, "Oh, no, you have to go back to zoning."
Your memorandum. Do you want this noted?
If you can...
All right. Obviously, there's no public comment. Does the board have any other questions?
The galley is full.
I know. And I'm sorry, I probably should have taken you guys first. I know Attorney Vaughn got a kick out of being here. I'm sure it was boring for you.
That was interesting for me, too.
We should have switched spots. Okay, then you want us to close?
No question.
No questions, yeah, sure.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I moved that we close the public comment.
I'll second.
Okay, um, Ron?
I, yes, I.
I am an I?
I.
Okay, oh.
Do we skip?
I made the motion, I.
Who didn't make it, Steve?
I.
Right, somebody didn't make it. Okay, do we need discussion as a board?
No, I don't think we do.
Anybody? Laura, James, something, nothing?
A little bit.
We're getting, we're getting your kids involved with lacrosse here.
Oh, there you go.
Don't get, don't get it going.
If the membership is less than.
No, I think lacrosse is too, it's too dangerous, I, I lumped that in with hockey.
I agree.
I do, okay, so.
Here we go. We move to grant a special permit for Homegrown Lacrosse LLC for property at four ninety-two Sutton Street, map seventy-five parcel zero-zero-zero-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero B. Also identified as zero thirty-four point A dash zero-zero-seven-five dash zero-zero-zero-one point B, North Andover, Mass. zero-one-eight-four-five, in the I-two zoning district. Pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash four point one, four point fourteen point I, recreational uses to allow for a recreational use in the I-two zoning district for the purpose of constructing and operating a thirty-nine thousand plus or minus square foot indoor athletic facility, approximately two thousand square feet to be office, bathroom, and storage spaces, thirty-seven thousand square feet to be open field, sport, open sports field area.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Um, I'll be the first to vote, yes.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Cross the board, have a great night, guys. We are, can I get a motion to move our discussion of the twenty twenty-four calendar to whatever next month is, December?
So moved.
Okay.
Always good.
Um, can I get a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.